It's 7:02 and I'm calling to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Thursday, May 16th, at the upon acquit auditorium in Lakeville. Is anyone recording other than Lake Cam? Obviously, we're in a big area here, so if anyone is, just raise your hand or wave it so we can make a record of it. I don't see anyone, so I'll assume no one is. The first agenda item we have this evening is the Benati hearing, and we received an email from Mr. Benati asking us to continue it to our next meeting, which is June, what is it, June?
June 20th.
To June 20th, I'll entertain a motion from one of the board members.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the second agenda item is the continuation of the Simmons Hill LLC hearing, which we opened and immediately continued in March and also in April. So, because obviously, it was a little chaotic that first meeting, what I am going to do is read the public notice into the record again. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40B as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, March 21st, 2024, 7:00 PM, in the Lakeville Public Library, Fort Precinct Street. Upon the petition of Simmons Hill LLC for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass. General Law, 40, excuse me, Chapter 40B, to construct 200 units, with 44 units to consist of single-family homes, 46 duplex cottage catering to an older demographic, and 11, 10-unit condominium buildings, of which not less than 50 of such units shall be restricted, as affordable for low and moderate income persons of families as required under the terms of the applicable state regulations and guidelines. The project is located off of Freetown Street and comprised of six separate Lakeville assessors, parcels map 34, block 2, lots 1, 2, 11, 12, and map 35, block 1, lots 2A and 4. Application is at the planning department. Okay. So, the first thing I'd like to do is take care of some housekeeping here. I am sure that the majority of folks, other than the last meeting we had to continue, have probably not been to the zoning board meeting before. Although we're housing it in the auditorium, which is where we have town meeting, which some of you have probably been to in the past, this is different in the sense that there is no vote taken at the end. The vote is restricted to the members of the zoning board of appeals. The process is that we, as a board, get an application in, we ask the petitioner to present what they're doing, we take comments from other boards in town, we rely on town council to make sure we follow the state regulations and laws, then the board asks some questions and makes some inquiries, then at that point, we open up to public comment. We'll do. And I will assure everyone out there, everyone in this auditorium is going to have ample time, or ample opportunity, I should say, to make comments, bring up questions, concerns, and whatnot. I have no intent in shutting anyone down, other than the fact, if you're rude, or unruly, or honestly swearing, because we had some of that last time, I ask everyone to please, let's just act civil towards each other here. I know people are not happy necessarily about the project that's being proposed, but again, I'm just asking us all to act civilly towards each other. You're all going to have an opportunity to speak. So, at this point, what I would like to do to start off with, because I'm not sure how familiar people are with the 40B laws and regulations, is I'm going to ask town council, Amy Questle, who's to my left, to your right, to kind of give everyone a, I want to call it a Reader's Digest version, but at least an overview of 40B.
Thank you, Amy Questle, Town Council. So, Chapter 40B is a state statute. It was enacted by the legislature in the late 60s, and what it allows is it allows that a developer can propose a residential development that is more dense than the zoning bylaws currently allow, because the developer can request waivers from any local bylaw or regulation. So, generally, a 40B developer will seek numerous waivers from the zoning bylaw. There are also waivers from subdivision control, there are waivers from a local, any local general bylaw, such as wetlands, and sometimes there are waivers from local Board of Health regulations. There are, right, there are regulations and statutes that the developer cannot waive, and those are state and federal statutes. So, for example, the developer cannot waive the Wetland Protection Act, so the Conservation Commission will still review this in relation to the Wetland Protection Act. The developer cannot waive any Title V, because that is a state statute, the Building Code, any Massachusetts Historical Commission, any of those concerns will go to the state. So, anything that's regulated by the state will continue to be regulated under that, under those state statutes. But in this instance, with a 40B, the zoning board of appeals essentially steps into the shoes of every local board in Lakeville, and they review the project from that lens. As you know, the, an application, once an application is filed, the board has 30 days to open the hearing, they then have 180 days to hold the public hearing. This is a public hearing, and after the 180 days, there's 40 days to issue a decision, and then that is filed with the town clerk. During the 180 days, what generally happens, and what would be my recommendation that would happen here, would be that after this hearing where the developer has issued, is going to present the project, the board has already agreed to hire a peer reviewer, and the peer reviewer will review the project with regard to engineering, civil engineering, stormwater, wetlands, wastewater, and they will be presenting their findings as we go, and also traffic. Sometimes, the easiest way to do it is that hearings will be continued by subject, so subject matter will be determined, and then that next hearing will be, for example, focused on traffic, something like that. But there is, the board has already hired a peer reviewer, and so the peer reviewer will issue their comments. The applicant then has the opportunity to revise their project according to comments by the peer reviewer. And then the other important job of the peer reviewer is that if the board decides to approve the project with conditions, the peer reviewer will recommend conditions and, you know, determine what conditions are appropriate and which ones are not. So, the board, at the conclusion of their review, the board has the opportunity to approve the project as filed, approve the project with conditions, or deny the project. Approving the project as filed is almost, almost never happens. And then denying the project is very difficult for the board to do, because the town is not in safe harbor. So, under Chapter 40B, there are some, there are safe harbors. If the town is in safe harbor, the town can then, can deny a project. The town is not in safe harbor, any denial has a very high burden associated with it, because the presumption of the need for affordable housing outweighs most everything. So, that is where we're at. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there is, as with any zoning board of appeals decision, there's a 20-day appeal period.
Okay, thank you, Amy. I did want to take a moment, I should have done this at the beginning, and I did want to express my gratitude to the school system. I don't know whether people realize it or not, but they're accommodating us. I know it's our school system, but it is a regional district, so Superintendent Strauss and his administration did give us access to, we have some predetermined dates that we will post on the website for upcoming meetings for this particular petition. I'd also want to thank Ray Goodwin and his custodial staff for setting this up, and Ryan Blanchett, who is the head of the IT, who made sure we're able to have a presentation that everyone can see. And also, thanks to Lake Cam and Jose back there. For the record, as Amy pointed out, there is a peer review firm that the town hires to review everything that's submitted by the petitioner. The petitioner does pay for that, just so you know, it's not on the town's dime, it's our reviewer, they get to pick up the tab, and the petitioner has already funded that account, correct?
Correct.
Yes. As Amy pointed out, just a reminder, think of us as like the gatekeeper. There are a bunch of other authorities that actually have oversight over things like wastewater management, drinking water, historical Native American issues. We will post on our website those various boards, commissions, authorities that have oversight on those. They're the ones who determine whether there is an issue and whether we can stop the project because of that. We don't have the authority to do that, just for the record, so everyone realizes that. The, I guess, the last couple of things I do want to mention before we get going and have the petitioner make their presentation, is that once public comment does start, there's two mics set up down at the front, the same way it is for town meeting. Please go to the mic, we'll alternate from one side to the next, and like I said, I'm going to give everybody the opportunity to express their concerns or opinions and whatnot, but please remember, keep it focused on this specific project. It doesn't have anything to do with the 40B statute, and if we don't like what the state dictates, it doesn't have to do with other projects, it has to, we need to, and town council will correct me if I'm wrong, we need to stay focused just on this project, because if we don't follow the certain protocol, we put ourselves in a position where the developer is going to be able to appeal it, and going to get to pretty much do what they want exactly as they want, to a pretty great degree, because we are not in safe harbor as a community. Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay. Having said that, I am going to now turn it over to whoever's going to present for the petitioner. Remember, when you do come up to the mic, as well as anyone who's speaking, other than the board members here, please state your name and your address. The petitioner doesn't need to state their address, but anybody from the audience, when it is time to get up, please state your name and your, and address, and correct. Amy's reminding me. All comments need to go through me, so no one yelling out from the crowds, honestly, even the board here. The board's going to ask to be recognized through the chair, and this is not a power trip, this is because we need to keep this thing running smooth and orderly, so please keep that in mind. Okay. Bob, are you presenting?
Yes.
Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your record, my name is Robert Mather. I am an attorney with an office in Lakeville, at One Lakeville Business Park. I represent the applicant, Simmons Hills LLC. With me tonight, on our development team, is Mohammed Aitani and Rami Aitani. Rami is in the control booth, Mohammed is to my left. We also have Alicia Mason and Owen Kelly, also part of the development team, and we have Paul Cusson. Paul is from Delphic Associates, Paul is our 40B consultant. Our engineering firm is Outback Engineering. This is an application for a comprehensive permit pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40B. Mass Housing has issued a project eligibility letter for this project, and that is a prerequisite for a comprehensive permit. At this point, I would like to confirm an agreement that we have made with the ZBA, and that is that the statutory time period that the board has to make a decision in this project, which is 180 days, as Chairman Oliveri said, will commence today, as opposed to the first hearing in March, which, as everyone knows, we were unable to have the hearing because of occupancy issues. So, the statutory time clock begins ticking today, as opposed to March. This way, our agreement is now on record. We understand completely that this is the beginning of a long process. Our purpose tonight is to give you an outline of our current proposal, and also a preliminary list of concerns that need to be addressed during the process, and that we intend to address during the process. I'd like to make a brief mention of the applicant. Simmons Hills LLC is a Stonebridge Homes company. Stonebridge has been, I think it's conceded, the most successful 40B developer in Lakeville. They have a great working development with the town. They've done 10 40B projects in Massachusetts and built more than 1,000 units. This project is very similar to their LeBaron Hills project, and we believe that project speaks for itself, and I really encourage everyone, if you haven't driven through that project, please do so. So, here's how I would like to proceed tonight. I'm going to give just a general review of the proposal. Mohammed is going to go through the site plans and the building renderings. I'm then going to list the concerns that we intend to address, that we're aware of, and that we know that we're going to address during this process. Paul, our 40B consultant, will address the target buyers and affordable qualifications and local preferences. Will give you a little more information about who buys these affordable, affordable units, excuse me. I then expect to kind of sit back, listen to the concerns that the board has, listens to the concerns that the public has. So, at this point, I'd like to start with Mohammed to show the site plans and the building renderings.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mohammed Aitani, I'm with Simmons Hill LLC. We're out of 32 Norfolk Ave in Massachusetts, in eastern Massachusetts.
Mohammed, let me interrupt you for a second. Just for the record, we've confirmed with the developer that they will be creating a website in which all of the presentations and any other materials in regards to this project will be housed, and as soon as that's available, within a few days, I think I'm correcting that, we will post that on the town's website, so you will have a place to go, and you will have all of the documents that are filed with the town to review at your convenience.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. We've established the website, we're setting it up now. We'll give that information to the town, the town can disseminate it, disseminate it to the public, but everything that we present to the board, before we present it, will be on the website.
Make sure you hold the mic up close to yourself or speak loudly, it's not the best.
Yeah.
According to Jose, very, very close of very, very loud speaking.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Mohammed Aitani, I'm with the development team. We are proposing this community, and we're modeling it similar to LeBaron Hills.
Mohammed, take it right out of the stand, put it right up to your mouth, there you go.
All right. There you go. So, again, good evening, everyone. You know, so the community that we're proposing is modeled after the community that we have in Lakeville, at LeBaron, the residences at LeBaron Hills. That community has multiple house designs. We have some single families, we have some duplexes, as well as we have some condos, similar to what we're seeing over here. So, what we're proposing of Freetown Street is an entrance, where currently, there is an entrance that goes to the cell tower, and then another entrance over on this side that connects the community. For safety, the town requires two means of egress, so that's where we have those two means of egress over here. The first, the, the, the single-family homes are clustered in this area, and those are going to be similar to, like I said, the single families that we currently have in LeBaron Hills. Past that, we're proposing some duplex units. Those duplex units are, each building is two units, those are single level, and those are going to be for 55 and older, similar to what we have in LeBaron Hills. So, we have...
Can you point to where the school is? What happened there?
The school, the school is down, down this way, so we're somewhere in this area. And then, towards the back of the project, we're proposing some condominium buildings. Each building is around 10 units, those vary from townhouses, as well as stacked units, so one unit on the first level, and one unit on the second level. Now, this, this community has 184 acres. Out of those, we're only, we're, we're developing, we're clearing around 66 acres, and we're leaving 118 acres untouched. So, the red area that you see, that area is going to stay untouched. The total acreage is 184. We have wetland area of around 44 acres, and an upland acre of 140 acres. Again, we're only developing 66 acres, so almost one-third of the property that was allocated to this project. You know? I don't have it in front of me. Yeah. Okay. So, Paul, you want to take it?
Thank you, Mohammed. My name is Paul Cusson, Principal of Delphic Associates. Our office is located in New Bedford, Massachusetts, and we primarily are considered to be experts in the area of 40B, and we also conduct the, which I'll get into a little bit, the housing lottery for the number of affordable units. So, a lot of people want to know what, who is going to be living in the development, and how does the affordable component work? Under 40B, 25% of the total number of units have to be set aside for what is recalled as affordable buyers. Now, that buyer, there are many different kinds of housing programs. Section 8, for example, is a much-needed type program, and serves the public fairly well. However, this is not a, a Section 8 development. The buyer who would be able to purchase these homes, these are all for-sale homes, and the income range for those buyers run from about $78,000 a year up to $100,000 a year, depending upon family size. So, this is what I would consider workforce housing, and our experience in handling, you know, a couple thousand units, is that the buyer is typically a municipal worker, could be a teacher, fireman, policeman, town hall, accountants, bookkeepers, just, you know, the general public with those income. They must be a first-time home buyer, which means that they haven't purchased a home in the last, in the last three years. The, the pricing for the 25% of those units, and as Mohammed had pointed out, we have different types of housing. There's the single family, and there's the condos, and there's the townhouses. So, every, and the 50, and one section will be for 55 and over. So, the price range for those affordable units will range in the vicinity between 215,000 to 245,000. The house styles will be, and we're going to get into the house styles, but the affordables will be represented on all of the affordable styles that we're proposing, and those units are distributed evenly throughout, throughout the development. And it's, it's important to note that we have a plan here that shows where the affordable units are located. Now, ultimately, it would be, as we go through the process with the housing board, with the zoning board of appeals, they may have some input, the audience may have some input as to maybe possibly relocating some of those units. This is what we're proposing, and we know this type of plan will most likely meet approval with mass housing, but however, it's not cast in stone. And ultimately, after we go through the zoning board process, and hopefully, they approve the development with certain conditions, mass housing will ultimately determine the location of, of the affordable units. And there again, as I, as I said, this is really designed for workforce housing. So, as we go through the process, and people have questions regarding, you know, how does that, well, how does the lottery work? One of the important things before we get into further presentation on the development itself, is there are 200 units, and I said 25%, so that means 50 houses are set aside and will be designated as affordable. What's an important component, 35 of those houses can be set aside for Lakeville residents. And as we go through a housing lottery, there will be a preference for Lakeville residents. So, that's, that's an important component of, of the plan that we're proposing. And at this time, Bob, maybe you want to continue?
Paul, can you also mention the income qualifications?
Sure.
For the affordable buyers?
Yeah, I did a little bit, but for example, a three-person household, their income would be $88,000 a year. So, they could make up to $88,000 a year and qualify for the affordable housing. A four-person household could have an income of $97,800. And there again, this is for-sale housing, they're, they have to be income-qualified, and they have to be able to support a mortgage. There are requirements for down payment, just like in conventional housing, although the requirement is a lot lower than conventional housing, it's a 3% minimum down payment that's going to be required. However, half of that could be a gift, and there are many, we, over the years, we have established a relationship with many lenders, and including Mass Housing, who is also a lender, that there are a number of program, grant programs that are available for the affordable buyers. Recently, we've, we've had some closings where the affordable buyers have gotten grants between $30,000 to $60,000, which is a down payment and closing cost assistance, and many of those grants are exactly that, they're grants, not a loan, it's not to be repaid. There are other grants that, that are granted as well, that's a partial grant, and some of it is repaid, but that's some technical stuff that we can get into at a later time.
Thank you, Paul. I want to go back to Mohammed at this time, to go over the renderings, the building types, the three different types of housings that we have, and the choices within those three different types.
Rami, could you please switch, switch to the plans, the house plans? So, so those are some of the houses that we're going to be, those are the houses that we are going to be proposing for the community. If you want to see them up close, again, you can go to LeBaron Hills, or Duxborough Estates in Bridgewater, or Cochise Estates in West Bridgewater. Those two communities are under construction currently, but you can get a feel of how those houses fit within a community. Those are some of the designs of the first floor of the Colonials that we're going to be offering. And we're going to be offering Colonials, as well as single-level homes, part of the single-family houses. Half of our designs will have a master bedroom, or a primary bedroom on the first level, to encourage empty nesters to move in them. This is an example of one, this is another example of another. You know, those are the single-family styles that we're going to be proposing for this community. The duplex units, those are going to be, again, this is another, the single families, some of the single families that we're going to be proposing. Single level in this case, another single, no, this is, this is a primary bedroom on the first floor. Now, those houses vary in size from 1,600 square feet to around 3,000 square feet. We expect those, those houses currently in Lakeville, they're selling anywhere from 750,000 to 850,000. We expect this community to, to have the same prices as well. This is a picture of the duplex units. Now, the duplex units are all single-family, even though it looks like it has a second floor, those are just for aesthetics. There is no second level on these. So, each unit, those are around 1,700 square feet per unit, comes with two-car garage, two-bedroom, a study, and, and... Comes with two-car garage, two-bedroom, a study, and, and two, and two bathrooms or two, two bathrooms. Those units currently in Lakeville, in LeBaron, are selling for around $600,000 a unit. And that's, that's prob, that's most likely going to be priced similarly in this community as well. We have two different designs. This is another design that we offer. This is the smallest unit that we offer. Again, it's all on one level. You have a primary bedroom, another bedroom, and a study. Those are going to be allocated to what's, what's called age-restricted housing, so they're going to be 55 and older. Typically, mass housing does not allow, does not encourage 55 and older for, for an affordable community, but the idea is there is a need in the community for elderly people or empty nesters to move from their Colonials into single-level homes. This way, they don't have to move outside of our community, they can stay within Lakeville, sell their big house after the kids have moved on and move into those, those duplex units. The other style that we're proposing is the condo buildings. The condo buildings, for the most part, has three designs. That's, that's what the building looks like. Those are townhouses. So it, so this, this from here to there, this is one unit, and then it goes to this side, this is another unit. Those are two-level units, or they can be all on one floor and then another unit on top. So we're, we're doing a mixture of both. So a total of three units, the smallest is, is, they vary in size from 1,700 to 2,200 square feet. Those currently in LeBaron are setting in the 550 range, 550 to 600 range. And that's what we expect for this community to be as well. So those are the styles of houses that we are proposing. Now what's, what's unique about this community, once it's done, again, this is a long process. I don't see us starting construction before two to three years. And this is a community that's going to take probably four to five years for it to be completed. Those are becoming more and more attractive for the environmentalists as we only develop part of the property and we keep a lot of open space. And that's exactly what we're doing. It encourages community life where people are living closer to each other, so it's more like a village feel within the community, as opposed to just having two-acre lots and, 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 you know, big houses. So this community will have sidewalks, will have walking trails, will have a dock park, will have some of those amenities that, that, you know, people will appreciate living in. Now those communities tend to attract, again, empty nesters, they tend to attract single people, newlyweds. In, in, in LeBaron Hills, for example, out of the three, out of the 286 units that are built currently, we have 24 children in the school system. So out of 286 units, there are only 24 kids in the school system. Now some of those kids are moving within Lakeville, so the 24 are not all new to the, to the Lakeville school system. You know, I know this is a concern of the community, but we, we can't have a better example than, than what we have down the street. The exact same product, the exact same mixture of units, and the way it stands today, out of 286 units occupied, there's only 24 children in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Again, just a, a brief review of the, the type of project and the density. So again, as, as we established, there's 44 single-family dwellings, there's 46 duplex units in 23 buildings, and as Mohammed mentioned, these are voluntarily submitted as over 55. And there's 110 condo townhouse units in 11 buildings, and everything is for sale. The total land area, once again, is 184.6 acres. And there's 122 acres of open space, that's almost two-thirds of the property. In that 122, excuse me, 184.6 acres, there's 44.1 acres of wetlands, 140.5 acres of upland area. So if you divide out that density, the, on the total area, it's basically comes out to be 40,205 square feet per unit, just under an acre. And if you just do it with the upland area, it's still 30,600 square feet per unit, just under three-quarters of an acre. And a quick note, Mass Housing has done their site view for this project, and they commented that the density of this project is significantly lower than what they normally see. So now what I'd like to do is give a brief outline of the concerns that we recognize that will need to be addressed during our approval process. Again, as I mentioned, this is a long process. Engineering, of course, is a major concern. And in engineering, we kind of divide that into a few categories. Drainage, of course, is a, is a big issue. Our engineer will work with the town's independent review engineer to make sure that the development is in compliance with all mass regulations, including stormwater management. We're charged with the obligation to show that we will not increase the flow of water off this property. Now speaking of water, of course, we have to have water for our community and for fire prevention. The plan is to install a community well, which will work the same as a municipal water supply. This will be permitted through the DEP. In addition, we also understand that the town of Lakeville has an agreement for water with the city of New Bedford. And that water line is only a mile and a half away from this project. So we're going to work with the town. If the town is interested, we would explore bringing the New Bedford water to the site. And one of the benefits of that is if it is brought to the site, it will also be brought to the people that live on, on Freetown Street. We're in the process, early process of discussion with the city of, of New Bedford. Obviously, they have to agree that they can provide the water, but we're going to explore that and we will give more information to the board in the future. Now, in addition, of course, in addition to providing water for the, the units, we also have to make sure the water supply is adequate for the Lakeville Fire Department for fire protection. In regard to septic, we're proposing the installation of a wastewater treatment plant on-site, which will be constructed, of course, in accordance with the regulations of the Mass DEP. There will not be individual on-site septic systems. And of course, that's a, that's a huge benefit. I mean, individual septic systems discharge the effluent directly into the soil. A wastewater treatment plant treats the effluent before it gets to the soil, and basically what is discharged into the soil is actually drinking water quality. And this will be similar to the septic, I don't plan on drinking it, but it does meet the, it's a, it's a good example of, if you look at the difference, in a regular septic system, what goes down your toilet goes into the ground. With a wastewater treatment plant, it is treated and, and it's of, of water quality when it goes into the, into the ground. In regard to landscaping, we will have a landscape architect present a proposal for landscaping of the site. That'll be one of the additional submissions that we make to the board. We also understand that there are Native American and general archaeological issues. We've seen the letter from the Wampanoag Tribe of Gayhead, which has raised concerns. They believe that the site has certain ceremonial stone landscape complex features that should be protected. To address that, we are engaging the services of public archaeological labs, they go by the name of PAL, to work with us and the Wampanoag Tribe to handle all of the tribe's concerns and of course, any other general archaeological concerns. One of the benefits that we have is that, as I mentioned before, we have 122 acres of open space. What that means is that if there are archaeological features, we have more than sufficient ability to modify our project to protect those concerns. Again, we expect that will be a, a subject that will probably be by itself in front of the board. In regard to traffic, of course, there's always traffic issues. We have hired Chappelle Engineering Associates, who has prepared a comprehensive traffic study, and will submit it to the board. The board will then have its review engineer review the study, and we'll address any and all traffic concerns. And again, we will have a meeting on that. We actually anticipate that that could possibly be our next meeting. Also, in regard to the Conservation Commission, we've had our first hearing with the CONCOM. We actually, we've had two hearings, and we will be filing an order of conditions with the CONCOM. We recognize that there are multiple vernal pools on the property, and we're in the process of identifying those. The Conservation Commission has hired an independent review engineer, and we're in the process of working with the review engineer. Our Board of Health raised some concerns about the location of the leaching field. We will address these with the Board of Health. Fire chief had some concerns, primary concern, of course, is proper water supply for, for fire protection. He also brought up an issue that he has a problem with the name, Rocky Woods, because apparently there is a Rocky Woods Road in town. So to alleviate that, we will be changing the name of the, the project, probably Simmons Hills, but we would need to meet with the, the fire chief and make sure there's no problems with, with that name. Mohammed briefly mentioned the fiscal impact on the town and the school system. All residential projects have an impact. Again, as Mohammed pointed out, we have the benefit of a project that is virtually the same as this of LeBaron. As Mohammed mentioned, that because 46 of the 200 units will be over 35, little or no children, no children in the over 55s at LeBaron. The townhouse condominiums generally have less children, so that leaves the 44 single-family dwellings. And as Mohammed pointed out, there are 24 students in the system, and several of them, three, four, five, we're not sure, actually came from, from Lakeville. In regard to the fiscal impact on the town, we're hiring a company to give us a full fiscal impact study, and which we believe will, will show this development, that because it's a 100% for-sale project, will not only not have a negative impact on the town, we believe that we can show that this will have a positive impact on the town and its local businesses. And again, that will be presented to the board as soon as it's received. Those are the issues that we've identified. If there are other issues that the board has or the public has, we would be more than happy to, to address those. Again, we recognize this is a long process, we hope to address all of the concerns. At this point, I would turn it back to the board if, to let us know what concerns they have, and then we'll sit back and listen to the concerns that the general public has. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Couple of memos that we received from other boards that I want to read, excuse me, that I would like to read into the record. We did receive a memo from the fire chief, Mike O'Brien, dated April 3rd. This, this document has been provided as comment from the fire department on the proposed 40B development adjacent to Freetown Street. Upon review of the application, I have the following concerns. In addition to the usual fire access and road dimension requirements, please be aware of the new requirements that were established with Lakeville's adoption of Mass General Law 148, Section 261 at town meeting. An apartment is required to be protected by code-compliant sprinkler system regardless of square footage, an apartment as defined as three or more living units in the same structure. Estimated call volume for 200 units is 96 responses. This is based on the average of 48 responses annually to the comparable Riverside Dry 40B Project 100 units. The most concerning aspect of the proposal is the lack of fire protection water, the closest static water source is the cistern at the school campus, 1.5 miles, the pool at Graze, 1.5 miles, and a bog pond on Highland Road, 1.1 miles. The bog pond has dried up once during drought conditions in recent years. If possible, town should require a cistern be constructed on-site containing adequate fire protection water. Additional comments will be submitted as the project moves forward. The, also have a memo dated March 14th from the Board of Health regarding Rocky Woods. Board of Health has received the petition for hearing of Rocky Woods. The conceptual comprehensive permit plan Rocky Woods subdivision in Lakeville Mass Revised 92523 shows a proposed leaching field for 52,000 a gallon a day within 200 feet of a private well. The Board of Health would like to know if there were other locations to place the leaching field on the 184.6 acre property that would be further away from the private wells of the dwellings surrounding the property. And the other memo comes from the Planning Board dated March 15th. At their Thursday, March 15th, 2024 meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above- referenced comprehensive permit for hearing from the Board of Appeals. After a lengthy discussion, the Board voted to send a recommendation strongly suggesting the zoning board deny the comprehensive permit based on the following reasons. 40B does not create more affordability, this is a priority protection parcel, there are native artifacts in history, the protected species in forest, the impacts to the schools would be too great, the increase to traffic, the impact to first responders, and destruction of natural resources. So.
Who was that from?
That was from the Planning Board. Okay, at this point, what I'd like to do is open it up to the board to see if anyone has any comments or questions. I will start off with the traffic study and the drainage issues were two items that I was going to make sure that we address, but obviously you've included it in your presentation, and you've already confirmed that you have a traffic study that sounds like will be ready, if it isn't already ready, very shortly for us to review. We want to make sure that that is a, a relatively busy road, especially in the mornings and the afternoon with schools, so we want to make sure that it is safe and doesn't cause any, any more unnecessary disruption than, than necessary. And obviously, the drainage, this is an issue that doesn't just come up on 40B projects, but in general, with a lot of what we hear on the zoning board, we, we want to make sure that any disturbance of land does not create additional water runoff into someone else's property. So as both us and the petitioner has mentioned, we'll get those engineered plans and our peer review will review them to make sure that that does not impact butters and neighbors. Those are my two concerns at this point. I'll open it up to the rest of my board if anyone has any comments or questions.
Mr. Chairman?
I just had a quick question on the undisturbed area with the...
Chris, you may need to hold it a little closer to him.
200 units, the undisturbed area is 118 acres. Just curious what the undisturbed area is on the 62 home sites by right?
Could you please, so what we're proposing is that we're, we're going to be disturbing around 66 acres out of the 184 acres, and 118 acres are going to stay undisturbed.
Correct. I, I was curious for a comparison, if you had it?
So if we're going to go with a regular current zoning subdivision?
Correct.
Is that what it is? We have a plan that actually was provided to Mass Housing. I'm not sure if we have it, we can, Rami, if you please, can, can you find that plan? So Mass Housing requires us to provide them on an as-is basis with the current zoning bylaw, how many houses can we fit on that parcel? And the engineer usually prepares one as it's, should be coming up on the screen shortly on what's called a, what's called a by-right plan.
Correct. Is there...
It's not, it's not up yet. It's not up yet. Yeah, so this plan is what's called a by-right plan. If we're going to take this property and construct a regular grid community that meets current zoning bylaws, I can't read the number of houses that would be, will fit on that
61 lots.
61.
So I think to your point, Chris, by right, you could do 61.
Right. No, I understand that. I'm asking what, if you have the figure, I don't know, like what is the undisturbed area with that project? Because it's highlighted in the 40B.
So on a by-right, on the by-right plan, probably 90% of the 184 acres will be disturbed. So I would say around 160 acres will be disturbed, because each house will occupy 70,000 square feet. So if you do that times 61, now not all the lots got cleared. Most people will end up keeping some trees and stuff, but they end up with time. People end up putting swimming pools, they put sheds, they expand their backyard. And so you will have to look at it, at all of them get disturbed in a way, over time.
Right. So the by-right project, there'd be much more land cleared?
That's correct. Much more roadways.
Yeah.
Much more. We were hoping that...
So you don't have a figure on that? It's just speculative?
I'm assuming, if we asked you to get us that comparison and those numbers, we could do that, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so if we can bring those back to the next meeting, I think that would be helpful to show the comparison as to what's going to get disturbed, this with the 40B project versus what would get disturbed with a traditional housing project.
That's correct.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other board members? Go right ahead, Jerry.
Hi, so I have a couple of questions around water supply and then treatment of the wastewater. I'd probably start with the wastewater side. Can you tell me a little bit more about what you're envisioning for the wastewater treatment facility, the location, proximity to other lots that are nearby? Like walk us, walk me through that portion, please.
Yeah. Rami, if you can please go back to the engineered site plan that shows where the treatment So the treatment plant, we're proposing it in this location. This is the leaching field for the treatment plant. So the treatment, the treatment will happen in this area, and then it goes, and it goes into a leaching facility in the ground, just similar to...
We can't hear you.
So basically, the proposed treatment plant will be on this location, and the leaching will be this. So what you see shaded in this area is where the water exiting the treatment plant will leach into the ground over in this area.
Right next to what?
That's within the community itself.
So do you have a proximate distance between that adjacent lot?
So...
The nearest lot and what's on the opposite side by Freetown Street?
The treatment plant will be in this location. The closest house will be this, the house on this property, from what I understand, is 220 feet away from the nearest lot.
Okay, hang on, folks. You're going to have a chance to get up at the mics. Why don't we do this? It sounds like we want to know, correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, we would like to know what the distance is from the treatment facility to the closest abutting property. So we can, I guarantee we can get that from the engineers exactly for the next meeting.
I do that.
So I'd like to see that distance, obviously, abutting to the left, right, of the wastewater treatment facility, and then to the right, that's the parcels that are along Freetown Street, okay? And from each adjacent lot, right? Because that's the impact to those abutters.
Hold your mic up to your mouth.
The abutters on Freetown Street are really far from the treatment plant itself.
All right, folks, listen, listen. Like I said, make notes, do whatever you want. You're going to have a chance to ask a question, to get clarification on anything that we ask, I promise. Everyone's going to have a chance to get up and talk.
So I just think it's important to have specifics, so exact distances would be relevant, right?
I don't have it with me. Next time, we'll be more than happy to provide you with a chart showing the closest properties to the treatment plant, yes.
Okay. What is, fine, fair question. What are the green shaded areas? Are those wetlands?
Those are wetlands, that's correct.
So I have another question around the phases. With La Baron, you had multiple phases. Can you kind of describe, share with me the details about your plans for phase construction here?
Well, the phases in La Baron, they intend to highlight the different style of the houses that we're building over there. At one time, we had all three phases, the single families, the condos, and the duplex units, all being built at the same time. But the total absorption of the project, we would expect it to be around four to five years for total completion. So we might be building the condos. At the same time, we're building the singles. At the same time, we're building the duplex units, you know, all concurrent, happening together.
So construction's concurrent for all areas of this project?
That's correct.
So my other question is around water supply. It sounds like there is a water line from New Bedford, wasn't aware of. Do you know where that exact location, where it ends?
But this is, what we're proposing is we're proposing what's called a community well. Now, the community well, which is shown in this location, will actually provide enough water to supply the whole community. And it becomes like a regular municipal water supply. So it has treatments, it has testing, it becomes like a small private water supply. This is, our intent is to develop this. But then we were made aware that there is a possibility that if the town would like to, we can consider getting the water from New Bedford. Actually, it's from Freetown. It's New Bedford water, but it comes from Freetown. It's around 1.5 miles away. It comes down up Howland Street, Howland Street, and then up Freetown, and then into the community, probably somewhere here. We do have access in this area here that goes to Howland Street, so that's another potential where the water line might run. In case, I mean, that's still a low, you know, I will call it probably a low probability, but we're considering it.
Other questions from the, Anthony? You're going to need this, aren't you?
Who is going to maintain your water supply system, freshwater and wastewater, going forward after construction's complete? Who's in charge of that? Who pays for it? Residents?
That's correct. The residents get billed based on their water use and their sewer use. So basically, just like a regular municipal water supply or a municipal sewer system, all those houses will be metered, and then the water reading will be done monthly by the community. The community will be managing all of these. What they do is they hire, like in La Baron, we hired NSU, Natural System and Utilities, and they manage actually on a daily basis. They come in, they make sure that the treatment plant is working properly, they test the soil for any high levels of untreated water. So we have observation walls. They take samples from those walls to make sure that the treatment plant is running the way it's supposed to. And we have to put in a report monthly to DEP about the water flow every day, so those get measured daily, and the tests get done daily. So after the water is treated, it goes through an ultraviolet cleansing system as well before it goes into the ground. And I know this doesn't sound like, okay, it comes out as drinking water quality, but a lot of the rivers, the Mississippi River, the way I understand it, by the time it reaches the ocean, 99% of the water in the Mississippi have been used already. So it's not uncommon. The Taunton Treatment Plant, it takes it from the Taunton River, the sewer, and then it gets treated and then back into the river. So that's not uncommon, and that's typical, actually, of water treatment systems, sewer treatment systems.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, I'll just remind everyone, when it comes to the public water supply or the wastewater treatment facilities, DEP has oversight. So if you have any real specific questions or concern about the approval process, again, we just need to make sure it's compliant with DEP regulations and that DEP signs off on it. We really don't have any authority over it. What I will say, the limited amount I know specifically about public water supplies is, I have a well. I guarantee any community water supply is getting checked a lot more often than I check my well water. And I'm sure most of you out there, you know, in Lakeville have well water. I don't think we're checking our wells down at analytical balance every week, let alone daily. So do we have any other questions from board members? Yep, go ahead, Jerry.
So I know we're going to talk about traffic in subsequent meetings, but, you know, with 200 units, you have both egresses going out to Freetown Street, which puts an undue burden on the street, particularly in the direction of going down the highway to County, right? Have you considered alternatives to that approach?
At this point, we don't have any other means of egress into the property except from Freetown Street.
So that means you're not open to the other alternatives, or you haven't considered those alternatives yet, or they have not been presented to you?
Oh, if they exist, we will consider them, definitely.
So to clarify, the only access points are to Freetown Street. There's no access to County or Howland or any place else, I think?
We, the property extends to County Street, right at the exit to Route 140, not this property, the adjoining property that we control as well. But this was slated at one time to be commercial. We're not sure what the future of that property is going to be. Eventually, it's going to be developed. Once it gets developed, then there will be another access from County Street. Actually, we...
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir.
What time are the kids going to have to leave for school? 5:30 in the morning?
Sir, if you have a question, you're going to have a chance to come up to the microphone. Just let us get through this portion of the process, please.
So part of our design, we allowed future access through the property that will actually go to County Street. But that's in the future, not currently proposed.
Okay, do we have any further questions from board members? Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I think it might be helpful for the next meeting if we could create a graph of the 1 through 12 items in the approval process. That seem to be the biggest contention items. Maybe comparing to what could be done by right with the 61 house lots compared to what you're doing now, so it's easier to kind of compare and contrast as to what might be, you know, better in certain areas and worse in certain areas?
Well, actually, we were hoping that the town will adopt what's called an OSRD, an Open Space Residential Zoning Bylaw. And I know it was in the planning when we had Mr. Resnick was working on a zoning bylaw that allows what's called an open space residential neighborhood, where you can put 30,000 square foot lots and then leave half the community open space. And a lot of towns have been adopting that. Unfortunately, my understanding that that got dropped and is no longer on the table. If that becomes available on the table, we might consider that.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Jerry.
One more question. From a single-family lot perspective, what is the square footage for those lots?
I think around 10,000 square feet, a quarter of an acre. La Baron, they vary between 10, between 7 and 10,000 square feet. I'm not sure if we have... So what we did in this case, this is a good example here, we left a 50-foot buffer between us and the neighbors that are on Freetown Street. So this area here is 50 feet, so we left that as undisturbed to try to minimize the impact on the houses, on our neighbors. But most of those lots are, on average, a quarter of an acre. Yeah, they're usually 80 feet by 125 feet, on average.
You're welcome. Anyone else? We good down the other end, Chris's? Okay. The rest of the folks have been waiting for. So what we're going to do is, I'm assuming a number of you have been to town meeting before, so we're going to orchestrate this the same way. We have two mics at the bottom. Whoever gets up here first on either side, that's going to start it, and then we'll alternate. And keep in mind, we're going to listen to everything you have to say. I can't emphasize enough, there are very few items that we are going to be able to say no to. In other words, not to be repetitive, the DEP issue with the community water, with the wastewater treatment facility. If DEP signs off on it, town has to accept it. When it comes to the archaeological studies with the Native Americans, if it gets signed off at the state of federal level, the town has to accept it. We don't have veto power to turn around and say, we don't care what the state says, we don't care what the federal government says, we don't care what some other authority says, we're just, we're going to say no because we want to say no. It'll get overturned immediately, and then we'll lose any mitigation or any power to make this project as good as it can be for the town. I understand when I say that, most people are saying, no project is what we want for the town. Unfortunately, our hands are tied. Again, if I'm misspeaking, counsel, please let me know. Okay, she said I'm not, so.
So what are the things that you can veto?
Come on up, come on up, come on up to the mic, and when you come up to the mic...
What are the items that you can veto?
Name and address, please, sir.
I don't want to give my name or address. I live in Lakeville.
You have to do that.
I don't have to do it. It's an open meeting. Why?
It's a public hearing. You have to. Counsel's just told me.
Yeah, well, I'm just asking you. What are the things that you can veto?
Could you please give me the name and address? Listen, we...
Yeah, Kaya Strzynski. I live at 59 Bedford Street. That's my name.
Brian, name and address, please, on to my right over here. Yep.
First of all, folks...
Name and address.
Kevin Donley, 19 Brookstone Drive. I would ask this whole meeting, I would concur with Chairman Oliveri, let's keep it civil. Let's keep it civil. Chairman Oliveri was a neighbor of mine. His father bought him a piece of land right next door to me on Brookstone Drive. I see it on the map. Please leave that map up there, whoever's controlling it. Is that all I need?
What, name and, oh yeah, just name and address, that's it. You're good. Absolutely.
Thank you, Chairman. But let's keep it civil. Mr. Mohammed, Mohammed, okay, let's get a couple of things clear. The mitigation process and all of that water that this is going to, this development's going to be built on, all that water is going to mitigate down to the Great Cedar Swamp. Excuse me, Mr. Attorney, I would appreciate the respect. I have the microphone. I appreciate... I appreciate you looking at me and listening.
Kevin.
All the water is-
Kevin, Kevin, excuse me. You're supposed to address the questions to me, because then we'll turn around and we'll tell them what we want them to get us in additional information.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. I apologize. The water is going to mitigate down to the Great Cedar Swamp. And people, buying water, just, I don't know, I'm a simple guy. Nobody owns water. It comes from the sky, it lands in the ground, it comes from the ponds, and you buy water. You're buying wat-, nobody owns water. And what's going to happen? I, I, I do not care what treatment plant you build, that is going to mitigate into every single well. And, you know, I went to Harvard at night, and it, it flows. It's going to come down, it's going to go. And I bet you, Mr. Chairman, there's 36 bodies of water in Lakeville. Are you aware of that, Mr. Mohammed? You're going to form 37, and we live in Lakeville, and they're all ponds. There's not a single lake in Lakeville. The ponds, every single body of water in Lakeville is a pond because they all have estuaries. And they flow. And 90% of the town is on wells. So please, 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 sir, I'm begging, through the board, don't insult my intelligence because I have very little of it. I do. I have very little of it. And you're insulting it by saying you're going to have, you're going to take your money, Mr. Mohammed, and you're going to go. I was, now, I'm not up, I'm not up here for applause. I am not up here for applause. I'm up here, I was delivering newspapers at six years old, and I worked my Canoni's off along with my wife. And don't buy attorneys and don't say, we're going to put this and we're going to put It's water. It's getting in the wells. This whole area of town, from this high school down to the ponds, are wells. Nobody owns the water. And for anybody up here, and I'm saying this respectfully, and please, please, don't anybody in this room take it the wrong way, I can pack up and leave. But I've been here for 30 years. I've quietly worked for this town. I quietly raised a lot of money for the playground at Assawampset. I'm proud to say my daughters have their names on the hall. My wife has her name at Free Lake on the wall. It's not about that. It's about community. And Mr. Mohammed, may God bless you, but you're going to destroy a community with this project. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Mary Jean Libertori. My husband and I live on 32 Freetown Street. We have lived there for 38 years. When Mr. Donley speaks about water, I'd like to just share a very simple scenario. One, many homes on the street are not able to have foundations. Why? Because it's an enormous bedrock area. Lakeville has one of the highest concentrations of bedrock in the state of Massachusetts. Our addition has a crawl space. Why? Because there was so much rock that the contractor was not able to get through it. Are we going to be hearing blasting, drilling as a project of this size is beginning? Has that been considered? I'd like to bring up water. Our next door neighbor's well went dry during the pandemic. They had fracking done. Guess whose well was affected? Ours. When Mr. Donley speaks about the water being connected, that is so, so true. Do you really want us to believe that you can predict what is going to happen with the water supply? I've heard that you hope to consider the New Bedford and Freetown water line. That's great. But I don't just work at a business in the industrial park in Lakeville. I live on Freetown Street. I wasn't planning on going anywhere, and I'm still not. I do not accept that there is nothing that can be done. I understand state laws, but you know what? The people that live here, the people that live on this street, in this community that we've lived in for so long, we count. I love the beautiful picture that you had up there of Rocky Woods. Well named, since there are so many rocks and boulders and ledges, and it's going to make drilling and blasting and building and placing wells, or a community well, so very difficult. But I'm not planning on going anywhere, and I'm not planning on stopping to try to talk about the photo that we saw something like that before with LaBarren. And I mean no disrespect, sir, to your project and your involvement in it, nor do I mean to disrespect the people whose homes are in LaBarren. But that is not a community. That is a metropolis. I don't want that in back of Freetown Street. You mentioned Native American history. Yes. You mentioned but gave little talk about endangered species. These things matter. Traffic matters. Schools matter. You think 20 more children or 40 more children doesn't matter? I worked as an aide at Assawampset for 23 years. Trust me, it matters. It does make a difference. It affects our quality of life. It affects the education the children can receive. It affects, from the police department standpoint, how quickly they can get there, how many traffic accidents are going to be. Have you ever walked down and seen how many people actually take the time to stop at the Howland Road and, and Freetown Street stop sign? Not a lot. You think that a few more cars is not going to cause a problem? There are probably three cars that I could name that raced down that road at 50 miles an hour, and the dump trucks and vehicles that came from the small project off of Howland Road, the disturbance to the community, the disturbance to the road, the safety issues. Are these things truly being considered? Are you making empty promises? You don't live here. We do. I understand you work here, Attorney Mather, and thank you for that, but you don't really live here, nor do you really, well, if you do, you don't live on Freetown Street, I can tell you that. I have a couple more comments. When we first saw that project so many years ago on LaBarren, it looked kind of pretty, like that. I have no doubt that your architecture is going to be very well presented. I do have doubt, and I heard it tonight, I heard about the undisturbed space and the other piece of property that is owned. Are we going to end up not with just the 200 units that you're proposing, but something more like LaBarren, with hundreds and hundreds, and the opportunity for more? Is that really what we want? Are we going to accept that? No, we're not. And so, maybe, gentlemen and ladies, you're saying that nothing can be done? But my personal plan is I am certainly going to make sure that I do my homework and that I see where the loopholes are. There is no project that does not have a loophole. LaBarren, that was supposed to be just this many and is now this many, guess what? Something happened there. It wasn't the presentation that we got when the plan was first proposed. And the fact that Mr. Simmons and your company is connected in some way, that does not give me a great deal of confidence in this. You spoke about, sir, the fact that this potential development exists there. Have you spoken about what your potential plans are? Can you commit here and now that you plan no other units? I don't care whether it's a townhouse, whether it's a duplex, whether it's a single home. I have no problem with 40B housing. It all looks great. The problem is, it's not just this. It's going to be this. And we'll have no control over it once it is stated that, sorry, folks, there's nothing we can do. And the state, God bless the state, I'm sure they've come down and looked, I'm sure they've sat on Freetown Street and watched the people driving up and down, the fact that no children are able to walk to school. You think they're going to walk from Rocky Woods or whatever you're going to call it? No, because they can't, because the traffic is horrific. I had one other question, sir, for the zoning board of appeals. You mentioned that as part of this process that you're bound to and that we're unfortunately chained to, that there will be an individual, I'll speak correctly here, called a peer reviewer. And what exactly does this peer reviewer do, and exactly how long do they continue to do it? Is it just until the state buys it and we finally have to accept that we have no other choice? Or do they stay and make sure that every guideline that's negotiated, every change that is altered in the discussions that are had and the meetings that are had, is that peer reviewer going to be around to make sure that's still happening? Were they there when LaBarren blossomed from a beautiful community to a metropolis? Are they going to be there for this one? I don't think so. I don't have a lot of confidence in that. And as a resident of Lakeville, I know I'm a newbie, I've only been here since 1985. I know there are many of you that have been here way longer than that, but the change that I've seen in our community, you're like dogs chasing their tail. Oh, let's buy this land and we'll get more money. And meanwhile, you're missing the big picture. You're looking at this temporary possibility to line pockets, and you're flavoring it with the sense that it's going to be better for us and some Lakeville residents will be able to, to buy into this. Great, but you know what? You're missing everything else. You're missing the destruction of the land. You're missing the fact that there's bedrock there, and we're all going to have to listen to what happens back there. Not to mention, did you drive down Howland Road when they were doing that little project? Have you seen the dust? I have asthma. I'm never going to survive this. No way. You can put whatever you want to over there. How about the schools? Do you work in them? Have you visited them? Have you spoken to the school boards and asked, what kind of impact did LaBarren Hills have? Have you talked to the police? Fire Department obviously has spoken up. They have some concerns, thank the good Lord. I just would like more investment in every part of this project. I would like more investment and caring, not just about how the houses appear, not just about hoping that the community well will be able to be connected to the, the Water Works development and consequently, New Bedford. We tried to connect the well over at Lakeville Hospital so we could do something there for what, 30 years now? 25 in Middleborough? Did it happen? Nope. Is it going to happen here? My confidence level is not real high, gentlemen and madam, and gentlemen and madam. As a resident of this town, I need some more assurances from you, that you care more than just how the place looks, but that you care about what happens to all of us who are going to live here for a long, long time yet. Thank you.
Hang on one second. I just want to respond to the question regards to peer review. It's not an individual, it's a engineering firm, and I'm going to defer to counsel to tell us exactly the process and how long they stay in the process, just to make sure you don't go away with an unanswered question. And I can assure you, we will be talking to police, we will be talking to fire, we will be reaching out to all the boards that we are, can reach out to. I will be completely blunt, we can't take into consideration the impact that it's going to have with more children in the community. It is prohibited legally for us to do that. So just for the record, I know nobody likes it when I tell you that the state is telling us what we can and can't do, but they, but they really are. So, you know, you can yell at us, and that's fine. We voluntarily agreed to be appointed to the zoning board, but at the end of the day, we need to execute and do what the laws regulate us to do. So in regards to peer review, could you just kind of give everyone a quick synopsis of how long they stay involved, Amy?
Sure. So peer review is already involved because the board accepted their proposal, the applicant has funded it, the peer review engineers work for the board, and they will stay involved until a decision is rendered. However, the decision, if it's a decision with conditions, there are usually numerous conditions that continue on that need engineering oversight, and in those circumstances, the peer reviewer will stay on and do certain, for example, if there's any kind of wetland replication or stormwater, you know, they'll, they'll have to approve the as-built for the stormwater and, and things such as that. So they will stay on even after the decision is made.
But they won't still be here if that other plot of land is determined that, hey, that looks like another area we could build some more.
Well, hang on, hang on. She's asking about if another piece of land comes up. In the future, we'll come back up to the mic, because part of the reason is protocol. Secondly, people can't hear you. But she was asking if, with that engineer, peer review is involved in if, if the petitioner decides to develop another piece of land. That's a completely separate project. If it's something that requires them to have peer review, then we will make sure they have peer review. If it's something that's by right that they don't need peer review, we can't really force them to have peer review at that point. So, okay, over here, sir.
My name is Pedro Senra. I, I live in Nine Margot Drive, Lakeville. I'm opposed to the whole plan. I can't speak for everyone here, but I've lived in Lakeville for almost 20 years. We chose to come here because of the lifestyle and AK and three-quarter that we have for our property. That's what we wanted. We didn't want, my, I didn't want, I came from, I could see what my neighbor was doing all day long. That is not what I chose to do. I wanted to be secluded by myself, or if I wanted a party, I could have and not disturb my neighbors. That's, that's what we chose. And I, my main question is, it looks like this project has taken quite a few years to put together, and we are supposed to give an answer in 180 days. How is that even possible? That is my question. Thank you.
That's a fair question, and I'm going to defer to counsel to answer that one.
It's in state law, so it's in 760 CMR 56 that only gives us 180 days. That, that said, that doesn't mean that the applicant cannot, cannot grant extensions of the 180 days. I do very, I do quite a few 40Bs throughout the Commonwealth, and I could say that there's been very, very few that I've done in 180 days. We've always needed extensions. But they don't have to give us an extension. They have, they have, it's up to them.
So the applicant, the applicant chooses whether or not we get, we have to give an answer in 180 days? We don't have an option?
We do not. It's up to the applicant to grant us an extension, and that is state law. There's nothing we can do about that.
Thank you.
Okay, sir.
Good evening. Lawrence Costant, 45 Freetown Street. Well, I guess there's a lot of things. I hate the whole project. I've, I've met Mohammed. I'm right at that corner where there's a drainage property, on the property, right at the back of my, 50 feet away from me with the 50-foot buffer. I hate everything about this. The access road runs right between my house and my neighbor's house. Everything's a disaster. I hate it. However, I understand 40B is an issue, but I also think we're, and counsel can answer this, you know, the state- But I also think, and counsel can answer this, you know, the state created a housing crisis. Why is it Lakeville's responsibility to fix it? So, how's about this? Instead of us constantly spending money on other stuff, and I'm on finance committee, just so we'll be 100% clear, so, and you can talk about, it's only 24 students. Costs us $11,500 per student per year to educate in this town. That's our share. So, 20 students, 40 students, you do the math. I wanna take that money and let's tell the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we're not doing this, and take them to court. Why can't we sue the Commonwealth? Counsel? Can we do that? Can we sue the Commonwealth?
Larry, am I on?
Yeah.
Larry, you gotta go through me. I will let counsel comment in a second, but unfortunately, it's not this board's purview to sue the Commonwealth in regards to whether they like the laws or whatnot. Unfortunately, we don't have that ability, that power, to turn around and take them to court.
Respectfully, Chairman, I agree. It's not, but you can also start the process by denying this and then letting, let them start their legal counsel, and then we can start going to the state saying, hey, we wanna change here. We're still citizens. We still pay taxes to the Commonwealth. Unless they want us to stop paying state taxes, I'm good with that.
Amy, can you respond at this point?
Sure.
Thank you.
If I may, sir, I would like to maybe answer your question with an example. So, when I draft a decision on a 40B, there are approximately, I would say 150 conditions that go along with a project such as this, with, you know, the construction. We go through conditions that are required prior to construction, during construction, after construction, and multitudes of conditions. If a project is outright denied, it goes to the Housing Appeals Committee, and the Housing Appeals Committee makes a decision, and their decision is almost always in favor of the developer and almost always has no conditions. And this just recently happened in a community that I represent. They denied the project and the project came back from HAC allowing the project with no conditions. For example, I have a standard condition in my decisions that state that the applicant has to pay for a third-party review for the building department, because when a building permit is applied for, the building department has, only has 30 days by state law to issue a permit. And in small towns, you can imagine the size of these building permit applications that come in. So, there's a standard condition that says that we get to hire a third-party reviewer that the applicant pays for, and they would help out with the building department issuing these permits. That condition was not even included. There were no conditions included. And so, by an outright denial is sometimes worse than a decision with numerous conditions. Now, that doesn't mean that all of my decisions with conditions are not appealed by developers, because quite a few are. But, in any event, it's, an outright denial is sometimes, can sometimes be more dangerous.
Hang on a second. So, just for clarification, and this may not be the answer that folks wanna hear out there, but how many 40Bs that have been denied in the state have actually been upheld when it's taken to court? And before you answer that question, you know, you brought up the point, which I think is a fair point, let's, you know, let's just go to the state and sue them and say, stop this legislation. That's a different issue when you say, well, the zoning board could say no. We can say no, but our outlet isn't to go to sue the state. Our outlet is, we say no, then it goes to court. You'd have to turn around, and the town would have to say, we're gonna sue the legislature to overturn a law that we think is unfair. That, the zoning board, we can't, we can't push it in that direction. Our answer is yea or nay. If it's no, and there isn't one of the very, very few reasons that we can say no for, it goes to court. And, now back to Amy, I mean, how many times has that been upheld at any community in the state in the history of 40B, which was, I believe, its legislation from 1969? How many have been upheld?
Well, there's been, there was one that was an outright denial, was upheld, and the project has, the project was revised and is currently being built. I would say denials are almost never upheld. There was one, in Stowe.
I know we're delivering a lot of news you folks don't wanna hear, but we could just agree with you and say, yes, let's say no, but at the end of the day, then the developer comes in and gets the project exactly how they want it without any mitigation, without us working to see if they can tweak the entrance, if they can turn around and shift the houses a certain way to make sure there's a little bit more of a buffer zone before the, between the development and the existing, you know, abutters. So, all that goes away if we say no. They go to housing court and it comes back and says, okay, it's approved now, and as Amy said, you guys don't have any conditions tied to it, so.
Sorry, you want?
Excuse me?
Sir? My name's Sullivan Gray. I live in Nine Public Way. And I had a question. What makes this specific place for this development so important? Like, for example, I've seen many other places in Lakeville where a development of similar size could be put that would be a lot less straining on the environment and the people around it. Like, for example, the abandoned hospital near Baldies on Main Street. That is a large, first of all, it's a large eyesore for many people who go by there. It's a very busy road. And, secondly, it's a large place of hazardous waste, and it does need to get cleaned up. And I know that's expensive, but again, if you guys are paying for it, I feel like you guys should be willing to put in the money to, well, you should be willing to sacrifice the money for the environmental benefits. And you still get a development at, near the hospital, but what prevents you from doing that area rather than this?
Are you asking me what prevents us from choosing this area?
Well, I was more directing it at that board, but I was told I'm not allowed to ask them directly.
Yeah, no, I mean, they own the property, they can do, you know, we can't tell them what they wanna propose to put there.
So, can I propose my question to them directly, then?
I...
Or, no?
Yeah, no, I think his question is he'd like to know why they wanna develop this area.
Yeah. Why develop this area specifically if they're looking to put a development in Lakeville because of the regulations from the state?
So, you're asking them why they're using this property versus the hospital property?
Versus the hospital.
They don't own the hospital property.
Well, they could purchase it from the state. It's up sale.
The state doesn't, the state doesn't own it either.
It's on sale for, from the city, correct?
No.
No?
No, private entity owns it, yeah. So, that's, unfortunately, that's...
Isn't it being sold, though? Thought it was being sold.
No.
Oh. My other question was about water shedding. Water shedding is in effect where wastewater flows down river from wastewater, from wastewater plants and factories and places that produce wastewater. How do you think water shedding would affect this project? And if you can't answer that, I was wondering what environmental board or what environmental committee would be working on that problem?
Am I correct in DEP is the one who handles that, Amy?
Yeah, our peer reviewer will handle it. So, the peer reviewer will look at stormwater and drainage, and then the Conservation Commission also looks at stormwater. So, under the Wetland Protection Act, there is a stormwater element that they will look at.
Okay. What I would like to add at this point is, conservation, DEP, our engineering, our peer reviews will look at it and explain what impacts, if any, it's going to have. I can guarantee you, we are going to dedicate at least one meeting, if not more, that's gonna really get into the water issues, because obviously, it's a big concern for all of the residents, and I completely understand it, and we wanna make sure that we are assured that the impact is not gonna be negative to any of the abutters or anybody who's downstream, as you said, so.
Okay. And my final question was about the endangered species in the area. You briefly touched on it, but I haven't heard of any endangered species in the area that you mentioned, and how they're going to be affected with the creation of this property.
They did mention briefly that they are going to make sure that it doesn't have any impact, and the oversight for that is through Mass Wildlife's National Heritage. So, National Heritage, which is through the state, is the one who oversees, and if it's obviously going to affect some type of endangered species, there needs to either be mitigation with them, or they're, if not, that could put the brakes on real quick, so, but that's up to National Heritage.
Well, if they're national, how close are they really looking into it, then?
Excuse me, natural heritage.
Nat, oh, natural heritage. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Good evening to the board. Good evening, Mr. Itini and associates. I share the concerns of every other resident here. I'm Steve Demaris. I live at 44 Freetown Street.
Name and address.
Steve Demaris, 44 Freetown Street, Lakeville.
Thank you.
So, I'm directly across from this gentleman. I'll be directly across from the second entrance on Freetown Street, if you are heading north on Freetown. I share all the same concerns. One big one that wasn't talked about very much was the effects of construction. We have a very small development on Howland Road. I live right on the bend that's portrayed up there on the map. We have dump trucks, 10-wheelers, you know, 18-wheeler, 40-toners going by, and it was a very small development size-wise compared to this. So, the four-to-five-year time plan, I'm really concerned. Again, I purchased land, not land, but I purchased my home in Lakeville seven, eight years ago now, with the intent of looking, I looked at plot plans and looked at who owned what and said, wow, this is a place I wanna live. I don't think it'll ever be developed, and here we are. I've also read the handbook that I came across for zoning board of appeals, that is a public document, and it's, there's a lot of stuff in there that goes way over my head legally. But I understand when you say you're bound by law, and unfortunately, the state does bind them pretty tightly by law. And I don't want, as much as I would like an outright denial, I understand that that's probably going to get us in a worse position by having no leverage at all to get some benefit here. My biggest concern's going forward, should this be approved either with conditions or without? Is there any possibility we can get in other means of egress off and on the property? So, I guess that's a pointed question. Is there, you said you owned a parcel that adjoins this property and county road. Why not develop an egress there now? I'm sure, you know, you're doing this because it's profitable. If it wasn't profitable, no one's gonna build housing to lose money. Why not develop that and give the community a little bit of assurance that, hey, going forward, this is what is going to be here? Because right now, we don't have any of that.
Thank you. Do you have a question, or?
Yeah, well, is there, could, is there any other possible means of egress that can be talked about right now, tonight, in and on and off this property, aside from the two that are on Freetown that are proposed?
The question was asked earlier, the developer answered it. At this point, there isn't, but I can assure you that, I'm sure just not myself, but a number of us have made that notation. Keep in mind, this is a process that we need to go through. We are going to be making asks and requests of the developer, to your point, where we're gonna try to get mitigation. If we can find another alternative to have less of impact on traffic, we will do our best to get them to agree to that. If we can find alternatives as far as the water issues go, we will do that as well. So, it's on our list of things to look at and push them for.
Okay. Procedural question, then. Moving forward, say, for whatever reason, we, something, something doesn't turn out the way we want. The project starts going on. One thing I'm concerned about that hasn't been brought up, I don't live directly adjoining, but 200, 300 feet or so from the sewage treatment plant, is it going to have a smell associated with it? I've been some, near some sewage treatment plants that smell horrendously, and I have been some, near some that don't smell at all, and they all look the same to me. I'm not a sewage treatment or wastewater specialist by any means. But that's massively concerning. That's a make-it-or-break-it deal for me. If I was to purchase a house next to a sewer treatment plant and it smelled all day long, I don't care if that house was $100,000, I would spend what I had to spend to move elsewhere. So, I, you know, I'm a, what I think we all share is a concern, is even with conditions, what recourse do we have after this is built? And I don't know if we have any. And I don't know if that's a question you can answer, but it's something I wanna say publicly. And again, there's so much documentation that goes in here. Do we have any recourse as a community?
So, I'm gonna make two comments, and then I'm gonna defer to counsel as far as if we can condition something like that or what we have from an ability standpoint after the fact. All the questions folks are asking and any of the issues you're bringing up, I mean, I'm making notes, I'm sure my fellow board members are making notes, and we will ask to get answers and ask to make sure that we have these concerns addressed and taken care of as best as we possibly can. Now, as far as after the fact, to your example of the treatment plant having a foul odor, there, I'm sure there are other things that, you know, could happen after the fact. I don't know if we have any authority after it's been permitted and it's been built, but I'll defer to counsel. I don't think we do after the fact, but...
Wastewater treatment plants are, they are subject to a groundwater discharge permit, which is 314 CMR 5. And that is, that is regulated by Mass DEP. It is a highly regulated permit by Mass DEP. There are numerous, I just know that there's numerous requirements for the owner of the wastewater treatment plant. What we could do is, we could issue a condition that states that they have to be in compliance with 314 CMR 5. And then, if they are out of compliance, we could, we might have some enforcement. But I can tell you that DEP, with regard to wastewater treatment plants and public water supplies, DEP would step in faster than they normally do.
Okay. And I guess my last question is, and this is gonna be a fairly pointed one, and then I just wanna know, and I may or may not be the last, and if you don't wanna answer, that's your right. Does anyone on either board live in or next to a development such as this?
You can ask whatever question you want. I don't, I live in Woodland Ridge, which is off of Pickens Street, so I'm more than willing to share that with you. It's up to you guys. You don't have to answer, but he asked the question, so I don't see any hands going up, and I will ask the next person if that was your last question to come on up. Anybody over this side?
Good evening, fellow Lakeville neighbors. Committee Leader Oliveri, Attorney Mather. John Connor, 18 Sherwood Lane. And I think, Joni, we own the second house on Rocky Woods Road, the second one. And a nice point by the lady that spoke for five or 10 minutes, she talked about the terrain. When we had our landscape done, they brought jackhammers. They did not bring the usual shovels. We, it took forever. It was an absolute joke, and I hope that you're really considering the noise pollution factor. Questions-wise, not a lot, but observations. And I did make some notes, John, based on your suggestion that we do that, rather than speak out when I talked about that funnel of traffic, that this is gonna be on Freetown Street, and the kids are gonna have to leave for school now at 5:30 in the morning to make their 7:20 class. It's a joke. Our kids can't afford to buy a house, but we build 40B for people who pay zero taxes. That doesn't add up. To compare it to the LaBarren project, which the houses go from 500,000 to 800,000 over there, of a member at the country club across the street, that's high-priced living. That's the Joneses. This is not the Joneses. Three. And final point. Bay State Prison was just, in Norfolk, was just turned into immigrant housing, 140 units. And right now, the Norfolk School System and the Rantham School System are on their ears trying to see how they're gonna facilitate that. So, that's what I have to say. Not questions, observations.
Hi. Christina Sargo, 10 Baker Lane. I just wanna know how we get to Safe Harbor on the 40B? You said we're not in Safe Harbor yet?
We aren't, and I'm not gonna mess this up, so I'm gonna have town council respond.
So, under 760 CMR 5603, there are numerous devices for Safe Harbor. The most prevalent one is 10% of affordable housing. So, Lakeville has to have 10% of the year-round housing units have to be affordable, which have to be available to someone that is 80% or less AMI.
What is AMI?
Annual Mean Income, which is, it's a federal number, it's, the area mean, I'm sorry, area mean income. And the other one is, which Lakeville was in Safe Harbor a few years ago, which is with a housing production plan, if you have a housing production plan that has been approved by EOHLC, which is the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, it's what used to be DHCD, they changed their name, they will certify a housing production plan, that housing production plan will have a certain goal that has to be met by the town in a year, and if a certain amount of affordable units are, go online in a certain year, you can get a one- or two-year Safe Harbor, it's more of a temporary Safe Harbor, the 10% Safe Harbor is...
So it changes all the time, because, so we could only have it for two years?
Only the housing production, only the housing production plan, Safe Harbor, that is only one year or two years.
Now, what happened with down by the railroad station?
The 10% is, that is, when the census comes out, when the 10-year census comes out, so we just got new numbers, when the 2020 census just, which is weird to say, but the 2020 census just came out, and so the numbers did change, so the next time the numbers change will be when the 2030 census comes out.
So what about down by the train station with all those houses back there and the apartments and all of that, how did that affect the 40B?
Those are counted on your subsidized housing inventory.
So how much more do we need to meet the state?
I can answer that question, so as of August 1st, 2023, there are 250 subsidized housing inventory units in the town, the town needs another 188.
So subsidized housing?
Affordable, he meant affordable. No, it's subsidized housing inventory is, that's the correct term.
Yeah, no, no, it is the correct term, but it's not Section 8, it's affordable, they refer to it as subsidized, but it's affordable housing, so, to your point, our ultimate goal is we need to get to 10%.
And where are we now, 8%?
No, we're under 6%.
5%.
Yeah, so when we get to 10%, and to your point, yes, that number does change, because if the census comes back and says we've gone up by 1,000, then all of a sudden, we have, you know...
So who increases the price of the housing?
Increases the price?
So if I have a house, and I bought a house 10 years ago, affordable housing, and now it's not affordable housing anymore, is that how it works? I don't know, I don't know.
No, it doesn't, Amy?
No, a unit, an affordable unit is deed restricted, and that, once that affordable unit is deed restricted, it stays as an SHI unit, as an affordable...
So it stays as an affordable?
As long as it's deed restricted, and there's an affordability agreement, there's, mass housing has a whole bunch of requirements.
So I think maybe to your point, maybe the question you're getting at is if I buy, if you buy an affordable unit, and then it escalates up, and now all of a sudden it's not affordable, no, it has to stay affordable, so if you bought an affordable unit because you qualified, the next, when you sell that house, you don't get to make a profit off of it, you turn around and have to sell it.
So when we add housing to the town of Lakeville?
Correct.
That decreases the affordable housing, because the affordable housing is already deeded, and those houses still stay as-is, but we've increased the number of housing, so that decreases our number of affordable housing.
Yes, what you're saying is as we add 1,000 units, now all of a sudden, that 10% may have just dropped down to 8.5%, and we have to go back and get it up to 10% again, yes. So that's why it is moving, because as the census comes back and says we're growing, now all of a sudden, that 10% number, remember, it's 10%, it's not a fixed, it's not a fixed number, and we're under 6% at this point, so we, until we hit that point, even with the housing production plan, it's just a temporary stay, gets you a year or two, but ultimately, the goal is to have...
So you'll never reach that 10% in reality?
Most small communities don't, in all honesty.
Yep.
Most small communities don't.
Okay, thank you.
Sir?
James Case, 31 Baker Lane, like most of the people in this room, and probably nearly all the people in this room, I would prefer if this development wouldn't happen at all, but just like me wanting to build an extension on my house, on the property that I own, as long as I'm meeting regulations of the state and the town and so forth, I would not expect them to stop me from doing so. As you've mentioned already, there's not a lot we can do, or a good chance that we could have this development squashed, so my, rather than questions, it's appeals to the board on the behalf of myself and everybody else, hopefully in this room too, to really push their best to help us in addressing our concerns about many of the areas that are being talked about. Number one, for me, is water. If we look at the map that's up there right now, open air, our wetland area versus upland area, it looks like, you know, there's very little wetland area, it's still a lot of wetland area. We all have wells in this area, we have to worry about, it's one aquifer, it's not an aquifer for everybody's house, for everybody's well, there's, it's very difficult to assess what the impact on aquifer would be for the addition of that many more units of families living here that are using water. You know, frankly, I like that the development is, you know, asking for a variance on the lot sizes, because with the smaller lot sizes, there's less area that's being cleared into open area, there's less lawns, there's less fertilizer running off those lawns into those wetlands, and so on and so forth. You know, whether they have the town or the community well there that's going to be tested all the time or not, that has nothing to do with what happens to that water as it makes its way through the aquifer over to my house. So I would, I would ask that, we hear some things from the developer, that yes, we're looking into getting water from New Bedford and on that Freetown line, well, I would ask that you try to make that with most effort you can as a requirement, as you said earlier, we can't really say, you know, make this thing go away, but we can come up with stipulations for, you know, what we want to have happen for this development to move forward, some from a water standpoint, please press for making that line coming in from New Bedford and Freetown a requirement, rather than something that is, you know, might happen. On the same token, we look at this site plan, and we have a lot of wetland areas here, we cannot compare this site to La Baron, La Baron is built on a sand pit, okay, this is not a sand pit. Where I live in Baker Lane used to be a sand pit as well, too, but this is more wetlands with some upland areas, there's no comparison. Water's going to be a much bigger deal here, I believe, than over there. Secondly, it's about safety, you know, obviously, the fire department, I was really pleased to hear one of the, all the concerns that they had, but traffic is a very big concern. Anybody who's walked, run, tried to ride their bike on Freetown Street, and I have done all three, it can be a harrowing experience, just driving on Freetown Street, never mind in the bad weather and wintertime, is a harrowing experience a lot of the times. Same thing goes with our school system's right there, I don't care if there's only going to be maybe 24, 40 new students coming from these housing units going into the school system, there's still a lot of impact for the traffic on that road. Right now in the mornings and in the early afternoons when the school lets out, it's a nightmare, and we have this being mentioned as a working type of a development, that we have people that are going to be of working age and so forth, that's 300-plus vehicles that are going to be going in and out of that development all day long, that's way too much for Freetown Street, because it's an undeveloped road, and many of the roads around it are undeveloped roads. Please try to fight for, they have to have two egresses, they've already mentioned that they own the property, they could put an egress out to County Road, it may not be on their master plan for developing that other plot today, make it a requirement that they have to put an egress out to County Street, opposed to having two on Freetown Street. We can't stop this, but I would plead to the board that we do the best we possibly can to come up with stipulations that are within the rights of the town and whatnot, to address safety and address water. And lastly, my one comment about this is, yes, we can't stop the development, they own the property, they can do what they want, but it's too much, there's too many units there for that lot of land, given that the amount of upland that's there, and the situation with the quality of the land and the wetlands there, it's just too much, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hi, Janet Chase, 3 Gunners Way, I heard two things tonight, I heard that there was going to be, from the developer, so much land that would be left undisturbed, and then not long after I heard future potential development. So is this just phase one, are they just getting in here with phase one, and then we're going to hear about phase two and phase three, because that's how it happens? This will end up being phase one, that's what I'm afraid of, are there any assurances that we can get from the town or from the developer saying this is going to stop here and it's not going to be, it's not going to grow, it's not going to be phase two and phase three, this land is not all going to be developed?
I am going to defer to council in one second, but I believe the, when he said this was all it was, it's for the property that they're applying for the permit for, they do own other parcels of property, which, you know, I can't comment on whether they're going to do something with another parcel of property, whether it's adjacent or another area of town. The specific lot and block that they applied for the permit for, this is the project that's on it. I think when they, when he's referring to another development, it's for a completely separate parcel of land.
That's what I'm asking, is it though, is it for a separate parcel of land, or are they going to do more development on this land?
It's a separate parcel, it abuts this land, but it's a separate parcel.
Okay, well, then, that's just semantics, this piece of property, is it going to be more than that?
No, I understand what you're saying, but we don't have, yeah, no, no, I understand, I don't, I'm not taking it personal. The problem is, we are restricted to deal with the permit that's been applied for on this piece of property, but what I can assure you is, we will incorporate that into our conversations to see if we can find out if that's, if that's the possible opportunity, obviously, people are asking about an exit on County Road, I believe they'd have to use that parcel of land, I can't commit to anything, but I can commit to this, I can't commit to much, I should say, but I can commit to this, we will ask the question and push as hard as we can.
And maybe get some assurances that there will not be more development on that? I know the whole, land as a whole, not just the parcel they're applying for now, if they own all that land, they said it was going to be undisturbed, will it really be undisturbed, or are there going to be more houses after this?
I can guarantee you, I will make sure we ask the question, I can't guarantee I'm going to get an answer, because we can't force them to give us an answer.
Well, then it just feels...
Yeah, I hear you, I hear you.
It feels shady, yeah.
Sir?
Yeah, I was going to go.
Sir?
Yeah.
Are you up?
There was a lady, I just wanted to make sure I'm not stepping away to the door. Rich Sheppick, 110 Highland, I want to thank the gentleman before me, he put it very nicely and adequately and politely to the board on the three issues that really, I think, we could try and address, and water is one of the biggest ones, right?
Yeah, he did do a good job.
I know.
I agree with you.
I just think if the petitioner would look at their plans and what they've already suggested, where they want to put their water treatment facility, and look at possibly not doing well versus getting city water from somewhere, would, I think, ease some people's minds, especially people who live on Freetown, I mean, two egresses coming on, on Freetown, that doesn't even begin to describe what's going to happen at Highland, what's happening at Highland, what's going to happen at County, and at some point, are we going to have to put in lights to regulate the traffic at Freetown and County, or County and 140, or at Highland and 140? Right now, Highland gets backed up pretty much, kind of like the school does during parts of the day, where it's almost a quarter of a mile back, you know, we already get enough of the, you know, Amazon trucks going through there, is cutting through, so, but if these people are going to want to go to downtown, go down to, you know, Salvo's, or down to Dunkin' Donuts, they're going to cut through Highland, and like you mentioned before, a lot of people ride their bikes, walk on these roads, run on these roads, adding to 300 cars coming out of there, and even on Highland and onto County, I mean, right now, we can't even get the potholes filled on County, so, you know, there's going to be a lot of infrastructure work that the town's going to have to put up money for. So I ask that, we ask the petitioners to, you know, seriously consider looking at different egresses, looking at the water and water treatment, and where they're putting it, and maybe act as a good petitioner to accommodate the needs of, especially the people that live on Freetown.
Thank you.
One second, sir, Anthony?
Counsel, question for you, can we legally require them to, or grant their permit with conditions saying that they can only use town water for the project? Is that possible? Are we able to, you know, grant this approval with the condition they must provide town water?
Can we enforce that?
We, you could, they could determine that the condition makes the project uneconomic, which is a reason for them to appeal it.
That answered, Anthony? Sir?
George Moore, Two Smith Circle, so what are the things that the board can deny a project on? What are the issues that a board can vote to deny a project on? I know you've been telling us what you have to accept from the state in front of the federal government, but what are the reasons and the conditions that the board could deny a permit on?
In general, they're safe.
I don't want to know general ones, I want to know specific ones.
Hang on, let me answer it, in general, it's safety, but I am going to ask town council to comment as specifically as she can on what exactly would be the grounds for a denial that would be upheld.
Environmental, if they're, they're not proposing a septic system, they're proposing a wastewater treatment plant, if they were proposing a septic system, and that septic system was too close to a well, and there was a chance of breakout, that would be a reason for a denial, but they're doing a wastewater treatment plant, so perhaps they're...
But can you require them to do separate septics rather than a wastewater treatment plant as part of, you know, a condition, so that the conditions then make it, reduce the size of a project like this?
So again, that would go to the same question that was just asked regarding water, which is, it can be conditioned that each, well, each single-family lot has their own septic and the duplexes, but the condominiums, but it would make the project uneconomic.
This is a residential zone, right? A treatment plant couldn't be built in a residential community, could it, by itself?
Yes, it could.
You would have to get some kind of zoning for that, though, right?
No, no, you have to get a permit from Mass DEP, which they have to get.
No, no, I'm talking about a regular treatment plan, if somebody wanted to come in and build a treatment plan...
No, sir, if you had a regular, traditional subdivision, and everybody got together and said, listen, we don't want to do septics, we want to do a treatment plant, you'd apply to DEP and they could approve it, you wouldn't need to change any zoning or anything.
All right, so that's one of the things that you can't control.
Correct.
All right, and so you're talking about safety, then, what other issues can you deny a permit on?
If they were unable, for example, if they were unable to satisfy a request by the fire department, which meant a life safety issue, let's say they turned around and they said, listen, the width of our road and the length of our road, we cannot do anything about it, other than the way we're proposing it, and the fire chief said, well, it's completely unsafe, and it doesn't meet, you know, state regulations, or whatever it is that he determines that, then we could, we would be within our right to deny it because it's a safety issue, because if there was a fire in a house and they couldn't get there, project done.
And so what about the safety of the people who reside on Freetown Street? Is that something that you can deny a project on?
If the fire chief, for example, in that scenario, came back and said that it's unsafe for them to put the development in, because it's going to prevent them from being able to respond to fires, absolutely.
All right, and so is that something that you've spoken to the fire chief about?
The fire chief is reviewing this, I read into the record that he already has made comments, and he will continue to make additional comments.
I asked the question, is that something that you've spoken to the fire chief about?
I haven't spoken to him in particular on it.
So you haven't raised any concerns about that, as a board yourself to the fire chief?
Well, first of all, what we need to do is we get a traffic report, which is going to turn around and take into consideration all of the roadways and travel flows and whatnot, and once we get that report, we have our peer engineer review it, and then we incorporate the fire chief into that, and yes, to your point, we will have discussions with the fire chief to make sure that it is safe, and if it isn't safe, yeah, that's ground... And if it isn't safe, yeah, that's grounds for us to turn around and tell them we're going to deny it, because we're not going to put people's lives in danger.
Well, you're going to do that with putting in 200 units on Freetown Street. All right, let me ask another question. This entranceway that you have down the bottom of this map for Freetown Street, that's the entranceway, correct?
Yes, there are two entranceways.
But that's one of them, right?
Correct.
And you indicated that the access road is the cell tower road? Is that what I heard?
It's the top, it's the road that's there right now that leads all the way back to the cell tower.
Okay. And so, who owns that road?
I don't know. Would you be able to answer who owns that? I see their attorney saying that, nodding, they own the road.
They own the whole road?
They own the road.
Do they own the cellphone tower?
Do you own the cellphone tower?
No, the, there's an, cellphone tower has an easement over--
Over the road?
Over the road.
So, you don't own the road outright?
No, we own the road.
No, no, they, I'll handle it. So, they own the road, but there is an easement that allows people to access the cellphone tower. So, they actually own the road.
I understand that. So, this is going to be a private road?
Yes.
And this development's not a public road?
Correct.
So, it's going to be private?
Correct.
With an easement over it?
Correct.
In order to build this?
No, they own the road. The easement's only for whoever owns the cell tower to gain access to.
No, I understand that. But they had to purchase the land and then give an eas, or give an easement back to the cellphone tower--
Right.
In order for them to, so the cellphone tower people have access over this particular road now?
Correct.
And they have an easement on that?
Correct.
And so, the private road that's going to supply this particular development is not just for the purposes of this development, it's also for the purposes of the cellphone tower?
In theory, yes. I guess so, yeah. I mean, it's allowing them access, so.
Yeah, so it's, so is that a grounds that you can deny a permit on?
No.
That it doesn't have access to a public road, public roadway, uninhibited?
No.
Why not?
We can't deny a permit on someone putting in a private road, sir.
No, the road is already there. They bought the road, and then gave it the easement to the company that owns the cellphone tower.
Right. Unfortunately, we, whether the road is public or private, it's not a grounds that we can deny a permit on.
They're giving an easement over that?
That's between the landowner and the cellphone people. Do you have any other questions or comments?
I do, I do. I have quite a few of them. So, what are the other grounds besides this general safety that you could deny a permit on?
Is there anything else?
It's too soon to tell. We haven't gotten our peer review.
Yeah. When we get peer review to look at the actual plans, we, this is, just for the record, everyone out there, this is the first time it's been presented to us as well. So, we're, there's a reason we were asking questions while we're listening and taking notes to you, so we're not even sure all the answers to all the questions, or even all the questions to ask at this point. So, we can't really comment too much on exactly what needs to be tweaked, what needs to be changed, what need, you know, what we can say no to at this point. So, unfortunately, I can't give you a lot of information, other than we are going to ask and bring all the concerns and questions to our peer review, and ask them to get us the information that we need as well.
So, how much of this development is affordable housing? That you're looking to meet this, what is the SHI goal?
25% of the project, 50 units.
And so, 50 units. So, why can't we limit the project as a condition to just those 50 units? If that's what you're trying to do, meet the minimum standards for affordable housing, instead of having 200 units and impacting Freetown Street the way it's going to? Because it's going to be a mess on Freetown Street.
Again, sir, we, there was a traffic study that is, if not completed, will be completed, that we will be reviewing through our peer review engineers with a fine-tooth comb to mitigate as much as we can.
Who does that traffic study?
Who does the traffic study? What's the name of the firm who's doing the traffic study? Chappell.
They're paying for it?
Oh, yeah. They have, they pay for everything. They actually pay for our people to review stuff.
Did you select the--
Peer review?
No, the board select the traffic study people? Did you say, "Hey, you're going to use these people"?
Yes. We selected the folks on our end who review the traffic study, yes.
And so, this 25% of affordable housing, can you limit the, with a condition, limit this project to that? Not only?
No.
You can't do that?
No.
Okay. And what about this traffic study? Does it just study the impact on Freetown Street? Or does it study the impact on the other surrounding streets that are there?
The traffic, I'm just, council's confirming it for me. It's going to, it'll, what it will do is, it'll give us a study on the impact of any traffic that's generated, and not just on Freetown Street from the project, and its effect on whether it's Freetown, County Street, anything that it leads out to, that could potentially be harmful to the town from a safety issue.
Thank you for that.
Hi, my name is Cora Purse. I live in New Bedford. I drink your water every day. I'm also at the Caste at Wampanoag, and I'm here on behalf of the Narragansett Indian Tribe as their deputy tipple. My first question, I did attend the planning board hearing over a year ago, and it was a different plan altogether. So, this is new to me, and at first, I was almost excited, until you said that there was going to be another phase, that was going to be off of County. And then I started worrying about my Howland Road, because you also mentioned the, you know, access there. Has this plan, as it is, has this been legally subdivided at planning boards yet? Do you have to do that, just because you own it all? I'm seeing this fish today. Was that already cut out of the existing parcels?
When you're asking about--
Oh, sorry.
Has it been subdivided by the planning board?
Right.
Has this, has what's being proposed to us--
Yeah.
Been subdivided by the planning board?
Yeah. Because, I mean, usually when you're breaking up, like if I own a big shoebox, and I'm going to make a third of it an apartment building, and another part I'm going to do open space, I've had to go to ask them for permission to subdivide my property that's a big shoebox and cut it in half, right? Or a third. So--
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah. No, they come to us. We stand, we take over that role from the planning board.
So, how many other segments of their, because you're, what is the total property that's owned by, that's in this parcel? That's owned by this?
When you say parcel, the one being presented, or all the land--
Altogether, that was, that was formerly the Will's property.
Yeah, I honestly, I don't know what the total amount was. And we will ask the petitioner if they'd be willing to actually, we can get that information.
Right. I mean, I think it's like another 120 acres is spread there. And it worries me, this is a very sacred spot to the Narragansett. To, I know that they've received the letter from Chairwoman Andrews of the Aquina. This is a very sacred spot. It's, and when conservation is looking at the perennial streams, the intermittent streams, the vernal pools throughout this property, they also must remember that there is no such thing as Freetown and Lakeville, you know, Plymouth County and Bristol County, they're all the same to us. Because this whole property, the idea of every time somebody talks about blasting, I cringe, because I know it's there. I know these giant boulders that are the size of that screen, that are on a teeny-weeny little boulder underneath it. And those are sacred to us. There are petroglyphs underneath those boulders, above those boulders. And I just really, I understand, there is not a person in this room that doesn't know somebody that needs affordable housing. $400,000, $300,000, that still isn't affordable. Not to the people that we want to stay in our communities. My kids can't afford to stay in my neighborhood. And that's sad, you know? Because, I mean, somebody mentioned it earlier of, you know, how much we paid for housing 10 years ago is not what today's prices are. And when, you know, when I first came in and saw the Rocky Woods with a smooth terrace, that's not this land. This land is filled with bedrock, it's filled with wetlands, it does feed the Cedar Swamp, which feeds Long Pond, which goes into Assawamse and Quiddicus and Parcha. And all of these sacred places to us, we came here in the winter for a reason, because of the water. And now, you know, there's several different spots where there's vernal pools, and there's going to be culverts. And they want to say that streams don't run year-round. Well, right now, they are definitely running year-round. And what you, what you risk putting out, you can only do this one time. You can try to erase us. You can try to erase the landscape. And even with the archaeologists, we still have the problems with Mass Historic not recognizing ceremonial stone landscapes. And that's, you know, in Rhode Island, they do. But in Massachusetts, it's always an argument, and, you know, Cheryl, you know, the Aquina, Ashby, and Narragansett, we've signed on to an agreement recognizing nationwide the importance of these sites. And you only have one chance not to mess it up. Do I understand that we need housing? Yes, I do. But do you need it that extensive? And even if we cut this, you know, how many units is it altogether?
200.
200 with 400 bedrooms. If we're going to do another phase two and a phase three, that's 500. And that terrifies me, you know? Because, I mean, at first, when I saw you were getting away from 140, I was pleased, I was worried about those people that are the over 55, because that's a very sacred spot. And, you know, I went to your house in Easton, I left you a note over a year ago, and I said, "Please, let me walk with your engineers, so that you don't make these mistakes." And I still offer that. Free Graddicus, you know, I will do this, because I love this site. I fought them on Freetown over a solar farm, another property owner. They promised us the sun and the moon. They said they were going to give King Philip's Cave to the town. They have yet to do that. That was in 2016, they promised us. And even with having archaeologists there, we still sacrificed an amazing, amazing areas of occupation that have amazing petroglyphs. I mean, to show your kids petroglyphs that are right down your street, you can't get that in these classrooms. They barely talk about our history, never mind what's in your backyard. And so, I just asked the board, and for each of the towns' boards and for the developer, you purchased a parcel of land that the quarry owners across the street couldn't develop for a reason. Because they also knew how sacred this was. They knew that Aquina was always interested in preserving this site. And unfortunately, you know, we don't have the money. You know, we never do. You know, I wish I could, I had money to purchase land on a regular basis, because I'm always approached of, gee, well, why don't you buy it? I don't have $3 million running around, but God, if I did, it would be for Rocky Woods. So, please, you only have one chance. Don't mess it up too badly. You've got to look at the traffic. There is no way that two roads can come out onto Howland Road. We all know this. We've all gotten detoured onto Howland Road, never mind bringing kids to games and sporting events here. Coming down Howland Road, during the construction of the solar farm, there were so many near-misses and horrible accidents that occurred in that vicinity. So, we risk, you know, interfering with the water supply, the endangered species, a ceremonial landscape that is unlike any others in Lakeville. And Lakeville does have a lot of amazing sacred sites for us, and will forever be grateful to Nancy Yates for preserving Betty's Neck. But this is, this was home. And we can look at Peace Haven on the Taunton River. That was, Powell did the archaeology there. They discovered, you know, areas of occupation that were over 12,000 years old. That's just down the street, and it was paved to pay paradise, put up a parking lot for Copart Auto, to have 22,000 parking spaces there. They erased us. Please don't erase us here. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Michelle Belliard, Little Farm Road. Thank you, guys, for your service to the town. I had a couple of specific questions, but I just wanted to mention, I moved to Lakeville with my wife and kids about 10 years ago. We moved here specifically because we liked the rural character of the town, we liked the larger plots, we liked the scene, the woods. That was just, that's what we moved here for, right? And in your, in the narrative, you know, multiple times you mentioned doing things in a certain way to preserve the rural characteristic of the area, but that density right there is not, not doing that at all. So, multiple people talked about concerns over the well, water issues. I guess my specific question is, if, as in a butter, my well runs dry during some phase of development, who pays for that?
I'm going to defer to you on that one. Keeping in mind that we have to, when I say you, I meant town council. We have to have our peer, again, I hate to keep using the same, say, give you guys the same answer, but again, at this point, it's, this is the beginning of the process for us, too. But our peer review engineers will look at it, they will make sure that whatever an engineer does to make sure that it's not going to impact anyone else, we will make sure we hold them to that standard. But to your point and your question is, if something happens after the fact that is caused by the developer and what they did, what recourse, if any, Amy, do they have?
It would, it was, it would be a board of health issue, because it would be a private well. What I have done in the past on other developments was to have a baseline done, and then well testing done. So, we could possibly look into that with, in the surrounding wells. We'd have a base, we would, there would be a baseline done, and then there would be well testing required.
Okay. Thank you. That doesn't answer the question, though. So, you're going to do due diligence to try to make sure that the plan doesn't dry a well? But if the well does dry--
So, there would be well testing done to make sure that the quantity and quality of the wells are not impacted?
Yep.
But again, that does, that does require the cooperation of the applicant. But I guess ultimately, if this were to be a public water supply, meaning a well, that's regulated by DEP, DEP would have, would probably also have to be involved if a budding well went dry.
Okay.
And let me just ask the question he's probably thinking. Does DEP hold the property owner accountable for fixing the problem?
Yeah, I appreciate the answer. I feel like I don't, I feel like it's me paying for my well. Is that right?
If we don't have an answer, we don't have an answer.
Yeah, I don't--
I think his direct question is what's, yeah. So, at the end of the day, it's under DEP's purview. Again, it's public water supply. They're the ones who are supposed to do the due diligence. To Amy's point, we can condition it to say, "Listen, we wanted to get that due diligence to the highest level that we can to do some testing ahead of time. And if there is a problem down the road, DEP is the one who is involved with enforcement of saying, 'Listen, you're going to pay for this well, it's caused by you,' type of a deal." So, it's out of our purview at that point.
And when you levy conditions as part of your approval of plans, you know, is it typical to have funds set aside for issues like this, in case, you know, there are issues that, you know, those funds would pay for remediation or whatever?
I don't think so, but I'll defer to council.
No, there's no, with municipal finance, there has to be a mechanism to be able to impose the requirement of a fund, and where to hold a fund. And there is no, under municipal finance laws, there's no mechanism for that.
Okay, all right. Is it possible to pull up the other site plan view? I had a couple of questions about that.
Sure, you can change it.
It was the one, it was black and white, I believe. It wasn't that view. It showed drains, yeah, so, so I see areas of wetland, I presume those are unbuildable. But it, but next to those areas, I see drains listed throughout, and I'm curious what those are and what the impact might be on the wetlands directly adjacent. What is that draining and where does it drain to?
Are we able to answer that? And if not, we will make sure that we do get the answer at the next meeting for you. I'm not, we don't actually have the engineer here tonight, but...
Yeah, unfortunately, our engineer is not available today, but next meeting, we can address that.
No, we will, we will get the answer. So, again, like I said, this is as much of an inquiry and fact-finding exercise, so we will make sure that answer is explained.
Okay. So, the wastewater treatment plant in the top-left right there, when you go on to the Lakeville GIS overlays and you look at the different water tables and things in the area, it looks like the 1% FEMA flood zone goes right through that area. And so, I, maybe it's not a question, I'm just pointing out, it seems silly to put a wastewater treatment site right in a potential flood zone. Seems like that could lead to some issues, perhaps.
I'm pretty confident if it's going to lead to issues, DEP will, will not approve the site or the plan.
Sure. Okay. What else do I have here? So, I know that as part of the ANRAD or whatever the form is, the builder's looking to reclassify Great Cedar Swamp River as an intermittent stream. Can I ask why?
I'm pretty sure that, I mean, you can ask why, but I'm assuming that's a con-con question.
Yeah, so, it changes the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. If it's intermittent stream, it's a hundred feet, if it's a perennial stream, it's two hundred feet.
Okay. So, they're trying to get less of a variance or less of a standoff by reclassifying that, right?
That's under the Wetland Protection Act, so they have to comply. That's nothing that this board can vary.
I was just asking the question because the developer was here, so...
We will make sure the engineer answers that as well.
Okay. And then, I guess, the last question, so, the area that they plan to build right now is a portion of the land that they own, is there any way to, I guess, would the builder be willing to rezone the other areas as non-buildable to give the town assurance that it's not going to be further developed? I feel like, you know, that would go a long way to, you know, winning the town, I guess.
We will make sure that that is incorporated into our questioning, negotiating, and we will get back to you on that one as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Noel Rillo, Reservoir of Lakeville. I'm concerned...
Ma'am, can you, you've got to come right up, yeah, there you go, turn it down and come up close and say your name and address again.
Okay, Noel Rillo, Reservoir of Lakeville. I am concerned for people's wells. And what about putting money in escrow in good faith for people, for any problems with their wells? I feel like this, this whole thing is overwhelming for people. And with all due respect to you, I know that you're giving us a lot of assurances that their state agencies are looking out for us. It didn't go so good with the hospital, I feel like DEP didn't do so well with that property, and so, there's a little bit of history there.
Let me, let me rephrase what I said earlier then.
You don't want to talk about that.
To make sure, no, 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 you're the state agencies. It's their purview, whether they do a good job or not, I hope they do a good job, if they're doing a job, they should do a good job. But the problem is, it's their decision.
Right.
And we need to push them to try to do as good of a job as they can.
Yeah, as a resident of Lakeville, what I would like to see is our town boards more empowered. For example, I noticed that our Board of Health man, are you the Board of Health man? No. My, excuse me, my eyes, but I look for him at a lot of these meetings because I feel like he, I would like to see the Board of Health have free license if this developer puts in a sewage treatment whatever or a water whatever, they should have free license to go in at any time with keys to any part of that facility and inspect it for health purposes and for water quality and all of that. I don't know, I, that's, I feel like I want to see our town more muscle, like, develop more muscle because I, personally, I feel like it's, the answer to so many of these questions is the state, the state, the state. And people in Massachusetts are really feeling like tired of hearing, you know, feeling like the state is the, you know, ultimate authority. We're a town, I don't, this is my feeling. Thank you.
I don't think you're going to get a lot of disagreement from a lot of people and a lot of boards in town. We would like to have a lot more power, but unfortunately, we don't.
Brennan Donahue, eighty-seven Crooked Lane. I'm a member of the Select Board, but I am not here representing the Select Board, I'm just here as a citizen. At a Conservation Commission meeting, I haven't kept up with them recently, they found vernal pools but hadn't reported them to the state yet. Have those been reported?
I don't know.
Another question. The measurement of vernal pools is meant to be done at the edge of a vernal pool, and I believe it's a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet from the edge of that vernal pool. When were these vernal pools measured? Because right now is the time to do it, not in winter or March, when there's no water there. Because you can't tell where the edge of the vernal pool is. And I'm bringing that up, not to be difficult, but because salamanders are the canaries in our coal mines. Salamanders are what tell us when the water goes bad because they're amphibians which absorb it through their skin and die. So, when we look at the right, where there's an L shape and you have a development off to the side that's not part of this, those houses, the yards flood. They have severe flooding issues. And there was actually a Facebook group created in regards to this. And I think for a week straight, it was just pictures of people's yards flooding. So, my question is, water has memory and everywhere that you see green, there is water. So, what responsibility will the developer have towards any flooding that occurs and the people's homes that are damaged from that flooding, if any responsibility at all?
So, I guess to answer your question is, as much as we can at this point, we will make sure that when we do talk to our peer review engineers and they're reviewing their plan, we will ask the question, what do we do to make sure that there is no water there and how can we get reassured that the water is not going to run and expand and go further than it's, than it's supposed to? When we have that answer, then we can have a more in-depth, detailed discussion about mitigation or assurances that it's not going to happen. So, but I can assure you, I mean, that's, that's been brought up many, many times tonight. If I haven't written, if I've written it down six times, I've written it down sixteen times at this point. So, we will be making sure that we do discuss water. I can tell you right now, between the safety issues, the traffic study and water, those are top priority. I mean, I, I don't think anybody who's come up here at this point hasn't brought up, if not all three, at least two of those.
And I understand that that's a completely fair response and this isn't meant to be difficult. But I feel like that's a lacking answer on their part to approve it, simply because they probably did that over there, but they still have flooding. So, it doesn't really offer assurance when it probably has gone through that process several times before and it's still happening. Can I offer suggestions as to how to make this better?
Sure.
Okay. Couple suggestions to save yourself some headache, and I'm directing this over there, but I'm talking to you. Shrink the houses. Some of them, I think, are too big and even though they're said, oh, this is fifty-five plus, we've heard that before and what's happened is that families have moved in with kids or one person is fifty-five and then they move in with grandchildren. So, you could even shrink the homes and add a couple more if they're smaller and maybe reduce the price because, again, as someone said before, these are not affordable homes. They're maybe affordable to the area, but it doesn't really help. So, I think the best thing that would help Lakeville is shrinking the homes, adding more of them to an affordable senior population, which cuts down on a lot of issues that we have, and just kind of integrating it with the energy that the town has and wants as opposed to just doing it. I just remembered one more question and then I'm gone. We talked about water potentially being town. So, in reference to La Barron, because La Barron was brought up as an example for this project, would they have a master meter or would it be on an individual home's basis? Because we heard that towns would be charged based on what they use in terms of water and sewage, but at La Barron, that is not happening at an affordable rate. So, I don't want that to happen to this development, which has people moving in and out all the time because they can't afford a master meter. So, that's just something I'd like to be taken into consideration when you're having these discussions.
Noted.
Thank you.
Kim Borg, Baker Lane. The question on the traffic survey, did that already happen?
We have not received it yet, I think it's in the ongoing phases. I think it's pretty close to the end. We actually, the plan is realistic, the plan is to review that at our next meeting in June.
So, in other words, the company that was hired to do the traffic survey has already been out to do that?
I don't know off the top of my head if they're in the middle of it, if, I believe they started it, I don't know if they're in the middle or at the end at this point.
Okay. With that being said, I would appreciate if you could come back with a date of when they did go out and do that or multiple dates, if they did it multiple times. It is my understanding and others' understanding, it was done during school vacation week already? So, with that being said, it'd be false data. So, if you could definitely take a look at that?
The traffic study will have when it was done, so, we'll have that information.
Perfect, I hope you can share. The other question I had...
Public record, it'll be available.
Online? Is that what you're saying?
It'll eventually be available online, once we get it, and then it's going to be posted. Like I had said earlier at the beginning of the meeting, any documents that this board receives, traffic study will be one of them, is going to be posted onto our website.
I know, and I know how quickly that stuff happens, so... The other question I have is, I just get this feeling, well, I should say, you've mentioned it a few times tonight, that this is your first time seeing many of this and we have to talk to this department and that department, I don't know and you don't know and we don't know, we know nothing tonight. But with that being said, this has been in the works for quite some time. So, why is it just now, you folks are just learning about this stuff? The departments within our town are just getting involved, just adding their input, just seeing this stuff now.
The presentation was just made this evening.
Okay, but so, you know nothing about any of this before tonight?
I'm telling you right now, anybody on the board got a copy of this presentation before this evening?
Okay, but...
Did you supply this presentation to anyone else in the town before this evening?
Not this presentation. When we applied to the state, there was a schematic of what we're envisioning, similar to this one, and I guess that was distributed to the, all the towns' boards, and that's why you have comments from the Board of Health, the Fire Department, the...
That came from the process that happened, I forget, what, was it a year ago?
It was like a year ago, that's correct.
Yeah, so, that was through the state, that this is, this is, this kicks off the process for us.
Okay, well, that's a little discouraging because you've known about this since the state presented it or they presented it to the state for about a year now. But now, after that first meeting we had, our hundred and eighty days ticked down. So, now, it sounds like we have very little time to get anything done.
No, it reset, the hundred and eighty started tonight again.
Oh, it reset, but still, that's a lot to go to all these different departments and have all this information compiled in a hundred and eighty days to get the true picture.
Listen, I hear you. I'll ask again in public, Amy, is there any way that we can extend it beyond a hundred and eighty days? Can we force the state to allow that?
No, I understand, no, we can't, we can only do that if they allow us to do it.
Amy, can you answer the question, please?
No, it's in the regulations, it's a hundred and eighty days.
However, we could ask them to extend it and it's up to them whether or not they choose to. She did mention that one of the other meetings.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, with that being said, I just don't, again, I'm just going to say it and that's it. It should have really been taken a look at prior to opening the meeting to the town because you guys have had the information, why couldn't you all get your ducks at a row and present something tonight instead of just saying, I don't know, I don't know, we'll have to get back to you. The hundred and eighty days are ticking.
If we turned around and started working on this after that meeting that had to get continued because of the issue with...
Yeah, space.
Space needs, that one hundred and eighty days would have started at that point. We wouldn't have had the opportunity to ask them to start the hundred and eighty days at this point, plus, it would have been open meeting law violation if we started working on this ahead of time.
Well, you don't talk about any of this stuff outside of open meeting?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I mean...
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, I just feel as though tonight's useless.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Doreen McLeod in Sixth Smith Circle. And I'm not really good at public speaking, but there's a couple of things I want to follow up on. A couple of women...
Just a little closer to the mic so they can hear you.
Sorry. Couple of women who came up and talked about what you guys are doing and then following up on what George said about the safety issues. So, you guys know that most of the people in the town don't want it, the fire chief knows it, police officers, all the other boards are selectmen. So, if there are safety issues that can stop this project, are people working really, really hard to make sure they explore every detail of every possible and potential safety hazard to stop this project? If that's the only way, other than a revolt, other than a revolt from the people and lying in front of the entrances when the trucks come? Because I lived in South Boston when Bob Kraft wanted to build a stadium and that was one of the things we proposed. And guess what? He didn't build a stadium. It's up in Foxborough. So, what is the town doing? Are you looking for things? Not looking for things to stop it, but researching as best you can to see if there are any safety issues or environmental issues that could stop this project. Because it's just too big. It doesn't belong there. We have water problems running down Free Town Street and as for exiting the street, I'll probably get killed coming out of Smith Circle. Because you can barely see cars coming from the high school as it is. That first exit is, I don't know how many feet, they're going to come out of there when they get their chance and they're going to gas it and there's going to be an accident at every single street that enters Free Town Street from across this property. So, the traffic, they're doing the traffic, so that's a safety issue. This side of the table or this table's running the traffic study and not Lakeville? I don't understand that. Do you guys want it? Does Lakeville want this? Not the Lakeville citizens, but the Lakeville...
The zoning board.
The zoning board, the police department, the fire chief.
I can't speak for everyone in town. What I can tell you, and I know people are getting tired of me saying this, but I can assure you, we will pointedly make sure the fire chief knows if there's any safety issues that are detrimental, that are going to cause, you know, a significant issue, he will need to let us know. The same thing with the police chief, the same thing with...
That's not what I'm asking.
What are you asking?
Are people working hard to make sure that they research every potential safety hazard, not, oh, yeah, I think that we'll be okay, maybe there'll be some water, maybe there'll be some fire hydrants.
Honestly, I can't, I can't answer for, you know, the individuals in particular areas.
What about you guys?
Honestly, I'm going to tell you right now, the fire chief knows a lot more than I do about safety on, you know...
Well, that doesn't mean you can't learn, you can't learn about vernal pools and water runoff and, and come up with an idea. We are, we're coming up with every possible idea to stop this. But I'm looking at blank faces going, well, what does this table think? That's what I'm hearing, well, what, what do they know?
Okay, ma'am, do you have any other comments or questions?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. You're up.
Hi, Peggy Riendo, Howland Road. Can we get back to that other photo with the, all the trees, the green, near 140, please? No, there, there you go. The lower right-hand corner, is that Margot Drive?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Now, the cistern and the water treatment is going right in that little green section that has nothing there, near the condos, correct? Okay. I do believe this same property owner owns all that property up on County, all, there's so many parcels up there. Why can't that all be put up towards the highway? No, I agree with that, but I'm just saying, because you have it so close to people's properties, why not try to move it away from the property and near the highway?
So, you, your request would be to have them move it?
Well, it's...
No, that's fine, we could, we'll ask the question.
Yeah, no, no, it seems, it seems that this is going to happen. And why not try to make it the best?
That's what we're here to do, whatever we can do to mitigate it, to make it...
Right, right.
Is palatable, there's something... Is palatable, there's something can be that you really don't want to happen.
I mean, I just, he owns, he owns all that property. I just don't see why that has to be so close to people's property down there.
Yep.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of follow-up questions.
Do me one favor. May, there was a woman over here. Were you getting, getting up to speak? Go ahead. Let, do me a favor. You've been up, let her ask the question, then you can come back.
Jamie Dismaris, 44 Freetown Street. When they do like the traffic survey, my question is, the entrance, the lower entrance on the curve, now, do you look back at the accidents that have happened in the past on Freetown Street?
Yes.
That all happen on that curve where that street comes?
Yes, they, they actually go back and historically look at accidents that have happened in certain areas on the street, and, and they turn around and look at traffic patterns in a, a specific timeframe, and, yeah, they, they look at, they don't just look at, they don't just pick two days and say, "What, how many cars are going up and down the street?"
I've only lived there eight years, but I've had, we've had multiple accidents, and they all happen in front of our house, which is directly across the street from the entrance of that street that they want to put in. So that's what I just wanted to know.
Okay. Nope, they do take that into, into, into fact. Yes, sir?
Hi, James Maloney, 24 Freetown Street. My driveway, I'm in the butter, it faces where that entrance road is coming out. I'm on that real bad section of curve that she just said. It's dangerous now. I mean, it's hazardous now. I mean, I have to roll my window down and listen for traffic before you can see it, okay? So another 200, 300 cars oncoming, coming out of this project. It's, you know, it's beyond treacherous. And, I mean, I don't know, and then on top of the headlights at night, coming into my house, basically blinding you when you come out of driveway. You know, so it's, I, I can't even take a turn on my side of the road when the cell phone trucks are coming out. So that's just a little problem now. Can you imagine when this thing is implemented?
I hear you. We'll make sure we get an answer to that, for the traffic study.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Nope, don't, don't get too comfortable. You're up.
Hi, Salia Briggs, 23 Freetown Street, and I abut the entrance to the rightway that goes out to the cell tower. So I'm just here to let you know that there are issues there. There are, there is flooding on that initial entryway, without a doubt, and I'm worried about that flooding my property. I'm worried about, as the project goes on, about lighting and street lighting. Is my property line going to be lit up like a city? Are there going to be streetlights? Because my, my property line goes right out to where the little mail center is, with, which is where that little round circle is, you know, things like that. It's a private road. Are buses going to be allowed down it, or is at some point, is the end of the street going to be a bus stop, and I'm going to have three times a day buses parked?
I can answer that question, which is, that's completely up to the school department. We have no purview over that. Some, they do go down some roads that are private, they don't go down some roads that-
Do we know if they go into La Baron Hills?
Do we know if the bus, if the buses go to La Baron Hills?
Some buses do, depending on, on what school. If it's elementary, I guess they drive through the community. If it's high school, they don't.
Yeah, I think, I, to, yeah, to the petitioner's point, I believe that's usually what happens. Even if it's a private road, if it's the younger kids, they'll usually send it down.
Well, my, my property is right to that little round circle, pretty much. And so I'm going to have, if that happens, I'm going to have cars abutting my property line, waiting for buses three times a day, which is a concern to me. I'm concerned about the mail center being placed there when there's all this acreage. They have to place the mail center directly behind my house, when maybe it could be centrally located within the community. Because as the other gentleman just said, when the cell tower trucks, when they were building the cell tower, they were in and out of there at all hours of the night. And the curve in the road, just them coming from the, before the curve, before they take the straightaway out, the lights just go to the back of my house, and into my bedrooms and all the back, you know, all the, all the back of my house. So that is going to be an issue for me. You know, it's, I have, I'm losing my privacy. I'm going to have light, you know, cars going down that road, 200, 300 cars a day, plus a mail center right at the back of my property. That's, I'm not looking forward to that. There is rock outcroppings that are at the back of my property. I, you know, I don't think that they're on my property, or they, but they're very close to the edge of my property, and I'm concerned about when they're doing blasting, or whatever they do. How, how close can they come to my property? You know, those types of things. How, how is that going to affect me? And the noise level, are there limitations to that? As, you know, it's a four or five-year project.
Yeah, normally on these types of projects of this size, we do put some provisions in there as far as hours that they can operate, and a lot of the stuff that you're talking about during the construction phases, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, those things are addressed, you know, because this is going to have, I think, a phenomena, just the impact on myself and Mr. Maso, who lives at, you know, 25, where, it's going to impact us a lot. Because there isn't, the second road isn't there yet. Is it going to, when they start building, are they going to put the second road in? Or is everything going to go in and out through our property, you know, in between our properties? Or, you know, I, I have seen plans from when they wanted to put the commercial property off of high, off a county road, there were house lots on the plan that I initially saw, too. So there may be plans at some point to put more houses behind our house. You know, and I understand that he owns the property, he can do that, but am I going to have like, be surrounded by three roads at some point in time? I'm concerned about things like that.
I've made notes of everything you've said. We'll ask all the questions, and you'll give the answers.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Stephanie Sierra, 33 Freetown Street. So our property is located directly in back of some of the single-family housing units. I think a concern of a lot of people on our side of the street is that although you are offering, although the art developer is offering a buffer, a 50-foot buffer is not that great of a buffer. It's a very small buffer. So I guess my question would be, is there a way, thinking that, you know, if this is going to happen, making this the best it could be, is there a way that, we've said several times tonight, I've heard said, that two-thirds of this isn't being developed? And I know a lot of that is wetlands. But is there a way to thin out some of that density behind our side of Freetown Street, so we're offered a little more than a 50-foot buffer? Because that isn't that much.
I'm not making a note, only because I've already made that note, to talk to them about increasing the buffer zone, if it's possible.
Thank you so much.
So what-
You're going to, you wanted wait?
Yeah.
Okay. You're up.
So what I'd like to know, again, is, does the board know how many homes currently are serviced by Freetown Street?
I honestly do not know off the top of my head. Does anybody on the board know how many homes are on Freetown Street?
Not directly on Freetown Street. I want to know how many homes Freetown Street services right now. I mean, we're looking for, I'm looking for safety reasons that somebody should look at. And I want to know how many homes are serviced by Freetown Street now, and then we're going to add 200 more with at least three people in each house to be exiting out onto Freetown Street. Free, plus the school. Can't support it. So I would like to know how many homes Freetown Street now services, and we're going to add 200 of the percentage of how many more homes we're going to add to be servicing on Freetown Street. Freetown Street servicing those homes.
I don't know, but we'll get the answer when we review the traffic study.
And I want to have, I want to follow up on this cell phone tower road. When that cell phone tower was initially put in by the town, they had to go through a process, I'm assuming?
I would assume so. I wasn't, I would assume so. I wasn't involved in that.
Well, do you know if there was any permits that were needed to issue that and build that cell phone tower?
I am going to go out on a limb here and say, I'm pretty sure there were permits that were needed to build that cell phone tower.
All right. And were there any conditions that were imposed specifically as to that road? Because that's the road that, that, that you want to gain access to this particular project in. I'm assuming-
I don't know, but the building commissioner's office would have any conditions that were attached to any permits.
So is that something you're telling me that I got to go do?
If you want to know the answer, you'd have to go to the building commissioner's office.
So I got, I have to go, I have to go do that and present it to you the next time.
You don't have to present it to me, but if you want to know if there are any conditions on the cell tower.
I do. That's the access road that they plan on using, right?
One of them, correct.
And, and the other one's on Freetown Street. There's nothing on County Road, correct?
At this point, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am?
Marilyn La Liberty, I'm on Tinkham Lane. I have a question about, I suppose you're going to have an HOA there? Nobody's talked about an HOA? At that development?
Usually, usually they do have, do have an HOA. I don't think that necessarily-
All right. I, I was wondering about that wastewater treatment plant, maintenance of that. Is that going to all be, it's going to be maintained by the people who reside in that little community?
I'm going to defer to town-
Probably with their HOAs?
I'll defer to town council to answer that, how that works.
So that, that's a, a good question. I have that same question. I'm not sure if it's going to be a condominium association or an HOA, because DEP usually requires a condominium association. But where this is different types of housing, I'm not really sure. So I do have that written down as a question, and yes, any maintenance of the, of the wastewater treatment plant will either remain with the developer, which is unlikely. He will most likely transfer that to, whether it be a condominium association or an HOA.
Right. So, so now you've got all these people, 200 homes, some of them are going to be low-income. What happens if they don't have enough money to maintain it? Is there any possibility that the town of Lakeville could be forced to bail them out?
Amy?
That would, no.
No?
No.
They would not be able to come back on the town of Lakeville?
So the, the entire development will remain private in perpetuity. So there, there will be a condition on the permit that they cannot petition the town to make, for example, to make the road private or public, or anything like that. And the permit for their wastewater treatment plant and their public water supply will be in the name of the developer or the developer's successors, which would not be the town.
Okay. Would they be able to go back to the developer, say, if down the road in the future, something happens to that plant? Would, would those homeowners be able to go back to the developer? Who's going to accept responsibility for fixing it?
That would, that would depend on what the homeowners or condominium documents, how, what, how they're going to-
Okay. And you say that's private, so there's not going to be any plowing there, maintenance of the roads?
No.
Okay. That sounds okay. And, let's see. The same thing with the water. There's a lot of water in there. What happens down the road again? If their homes start flooding, their sellers get flooding, this, their foundations start collapsing, can they come back after Lakeville again because of the permits?
They can't come back after the town.
They can't come back into Lakeville?
They can't come back after Lakeville and hold Lakeville responsible for fixing and paying for stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the, the, Lakeville doesn't, is not going to hold any financial burden
Okay. All right. That's what I want to know. And somebody else asked the same question about, about the well. If their well is affected, there was, I think there were a couple of houses built at the bottom of Freetown Street that they actually had to do some blasting in there. So I'm, if wells are damaged or foundations are cracked-
Into the mic, so everyone can hear you. I can hear you, but the rest of us can't.
Okay. If their wells are damaged or their foundations are cracked, is, who, who would the property owners around, who would they go to?
Yeah, it's, it's, they would have to go after the developer. It would be as if somebody built the house next to you, and they did something wrong during the process, and it damaged your property or your yard, you'd have to go after them.
Okay, all right. And there's no guarantee that this, this water treatment plant is not going to have an odor?
I think, Amy, when you deferred to DEP before, right, they will, they will make sure that there's, there's no odor, and if there is odor, they, when they come out and test it, they have to get rid of it and fix it, do whatever mitigation they need to get rid of it.
Okay, all right. Okay, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Christopher Plonker, Baker Lane. As finance committee chair, my biggest, one of my biggest concerns is obviously the impact to the town budget. We, in general, high-density housing, the revenue, tax revenue generated generally does not cover the impact to the town resources, such as the schools, increase in police and fire services. So my question is, and I'm sure Chief O'Brien will be providing additional inputs, would be regarding the staffing levels required for the fire department resulting from this development. Not sure if folks know that the board approved last December to fund additional firefighters, to help the fire department, and reduce some of the overtime for the firefighter, the callback staff. If anybody has followed the, the numbers that the chief has presented, the call volume has grown considerably over the last few years, a lot resulting from a lot of this development. So the call volume is only going to go up. Unfortunately, again, I have intimate knowledge of the town budget, we have, and the fiscal challenges that we're facing, and our budget is tight to the point where we are funding those additional firefighters through an opa grant, which will be running out later this year. So anybody knows the grant needs, is just that. It's a, it's temporary funding. Where, I am aware that the chief is going to go after additional grants to cover those firefighters, additional firefighters, to provide the level of protection that this town requires. However, again, that just undermines the fact that we don't have the funding right now for additional firefighters that we desperately need. And this is only going to make the problem even worse. So again, my concern is, and I'm sure that'll be addressed, that the additional impacts to police and fire staffing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to make a comment?
Salia Briggs, 23 Freetown Street. I can just tell you that the cell tower did go through the zoning board of appeals when it was built. There were many, many meetings about it. It has a height restriction on it, things like that. It went through all the proper, proper procedures.
Yeah, like I said, I'm pretty sure that, you can't put up a cell tower without a permit.
It's legitimate.
Sir on the left over here.
Thank you. Wayne Hagman, La Baron Boulevard. Just two easy questions. How many times will the comprehensive permit be amended? As in La Baron?
Sir over here.
Sorry?
Unfortunately-
That changes the whole, the whole situation.
It, it changes as time goes on. I mean, they, if they decide to change something, they can come and ask the board, as they've done with La Baron, to amend it, and at that point, we take it from there. But I, you know-
He gets granted it every time. And the second question is, when will the affordable housing be built? Because as you know, in La Baron, that hasn't happened yet.
Amy, can you defer to when the affordable housing component happens with the project approval?
Sure. So the, they can only build a certain amount of market rate units before they have to build an affordable. So there's a formula. So they're required to build a certain amount of affordables before they can continue on. The La Baron project is, is, is different. It's my understanding that they went back, and one of the phases removed the affordability, all of the affordability units to be put into future phases. That is not, that's not the situation here.
That's why I was asking when they're going to be built, because he pulled back on La Baron, and they haven't been done yet.
So if, if that were the case, he has to come back to this board for a modification of the permit? Because the permit, if there's, if there's a decision with conditions, one of the conditions will require that affordable units have to be built in the same, in conjunction with the market rate units.
All right, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Joy Malomo with, no, 11 Bushon Lane. Sorry, I thought I was at my networking meeting. Sorry, I thought I was at my networking meeting. Question about the families and the houses that are surrounding that when they do perk tests or they're, you know, trying for water and all that, and these houses are having their walls shook and their, you know, the sheetrock breaking and things like that. You've heard people already say that that has already happened when they were doing some perk testing and things like that around the area. We've already heard people saying that they are already flooded. We've also heard people saying that the accidents, you know, that's happening, the security, the safety of them driving, you know, in and out, things like that. So, your loyalty hopefully is with our community, and hopefully you'll see that the safety is way higher of, it's going to be way worse for those families around there and for our kids on those buses going up and down that street every single day, and it's going to increase a lot more traffic. So, I'm hoping that you guys make the right decision with that, with the safety itself. Secondly, if somebody's house does get ruined because of this, how do you ensure that a builder has a surety bond? Because I know that there have been places that there was no surety bond, there was flooding that was caused, and now the people are paying 50, 60, $70,000 to have it fixed, and the builders walk away. How do, how do we make sure that they pull a surety bond so that there's a bond there for the people to go after if there's an issue with their homes?
So, I'm not so sure we have the ability to institute a surety, a surety bond.
Maybe I'm using the wrong word for, maybe it's not surety, but it's a bond that the builder would-
Yeah, I don't think we have the ability to put, to require a bond, do we?
No.
No, we don't. The zoning board, the zoning board doesn't have the ability to, to do that.
Is there another board in town that does that? Am I asking the wrong board this question? Is that why?
I don't know. We're going to find out in a second, though.
So, so, no, the zoning board steps into the shoes of all of the other local boards. There is not a local board that, that has to, that would require a construction surety. The building code requires that general contractors have certain bonding and certain insurance.
Okay, then maybe I used the wrong word of surety bond. The bond that they, how do we ensure that they pull the bond, back the bond for the people to have something to go against later on if there's issues?
Are you asking if they did something that caused damage to someone else's property or whatnot?
Yeah.
A bond, a bond wouldn't cover that. A bond, a bond covers you finishing something to, to the end. So, you're talking about liability. So, they, if the, I, I know our building commissioner makes sure that insurance is in place for anybody who pulls a permit, so there will be on file that the developer has insurance in place, and then you can go after the developer's insurance if he, if he has proven negligent and causes damage to your, to your property.
Can they use that if something happens, if they start flooding or whatever?
If you caused property damage to somebody because of work that you did-
Because they started building.
You're liable for it. Yeah, that's property damage.
Okay. And because we have a proprietorship in town that couldn't go after a bond and had to pay $60,000 between the 55 houses after the builder walked away when it flooded a bunch of stuff. So, I just wanted to know, how do you ensure that? Make sure?
Yeah, I can't answer specifically on another project, but-
No, I know. I know that. And then I just want to make a statement. You guys all took an oath to the Constitution, correct, when you took your seats?
We got sworn, we got sworn in. I'm not sure if it was an oath to the Constitution, but-
Well, you know, as far as I'm concerned, these oaths are to the Constitution, because the people are what give you the direction, the instructions, and federal and state laws do not supersede constitutional laws. Right?
I'm going to defer to council. I'm not an expert on constitutional law by any stretch.
That was my least favorite subject in law school 25 years ago. Yeah, I guess, sure.
It does. So, both, the Constitution supersedes the state and federal codes and ethics.
I don't think so.
I don't, it just, continue making-
Massachusetts has a home rule, is a home rule amendment state, so it's murky.
It's called Home Rule Amendment?
Yep, the Home Rule Amendment, yep.
Okay. Can you explain that a little bit?
Chapter 89. It lets the, of the, or the, Amendment 89 or something. It allows the state to do certain, to control certain aspects rather than having the federal government control everything. It also allows municipalities to control certain things.
Certain things.
Zoning, for example.
But tonight, we were told that we, our hands were tied with a lot of that through the state. The state wouldn't let us do it. The state wouldn't let us say no. The state wouldn't let us make a decision on that, so we don't really have a lot of ability to-
The state is like a parent. They tell us, go ahead and do this unless we don't like it, and then we're going to trump you and say, nope, this is, this is the way it works. So, you wanted to read a statement?
Yeah, I, I just know that both, the constitutions of both the state and federal make it very clear that the people created the government and that we have the final say in everything that the government, you know, creates. The government created corporations, and corporations are bound by the same constitution. So, bylaws, you know, made by 100 people don't really mean much, because it lesses the law, it lesses, lesses the law of the Constitution that does not supersede. The legislation repugnant to the Constitution, such as the 40B, is void at inception because of that? Because of us being able to tell you what we want, and you're supposed to listen to what we want, and you're not supposed to go by what the state says. Right? You're not going to answer.
You can make the statement, please.
So, anyways, I have a question about, how much money is our Lakeville getting from federal and state funding for this 40B project?
I'm pretty sure we're not getting anything for a 40B.
They don't match?
Nope. Nope. Nothing. Zero.
They don't match any of that money or?
Zero.
Okay.
Zero times zero.
Okay. That's not what I understood how people had explained it to me. But, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We got one more?
Finally, I'll, I'll make a couple of questions and a statement. So, I'm Rodney Dixon, 39 Baker Lane, Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, but not here as the chair, but as a private citizen. One, do we have a current valid housing production plan?
I believe the answer is yes.
Excellent. Two, from, you said earlier that LeBaron had removed or delayed some of the affordable housing to a different phase, is that correct?
Yes. Amy, they, they delayed some of the affordable housing to a later phase, is correct?
Yes, in LeBaron?
Yes.
The 70-unit, I think it was 53.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead. Please comment on that.
This subject with LeBaron keeps, keeps coming up.
Put the, there you go.
I know this question with LeBaron affordable houses keeps coming up. The truth of the matter is, the affordable houses were built way before the rest of the subdivision was built. Currently in LeBaron, there are 70 affordable houses that are already built and occupied. Now, we already meet the 25%. Everything that's built there, 25% is affordable. We still have around 100 units to be built. Those will have 25 affordable units to them. But currently, there are 70 affordable units that are built out of the 280 that are, that are built. And I'm not sure why this keeps, I don't know who's, who's, why do they say that they were never built? They were built actually before the rest of the community, which allowed us to build 100 houses to just catch up to the affordables that were built. So, LeBaron has all the affordable that, that was permitted, and it was done actually before the market rate units were built, and currently we have 70, which is 25% of the houses that are built.
Mr. Chair, I'll speak through you, to you through him, or I should say, to him through you. The purpose of the question was not related specifically to LeBaron, rather the, those, you said 70, if they're delayed, they come off our current, current stock, is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand.
So, we have to have 10%. Say 10% is 100. We take 70, now we've got 30, if it's delayed to a different time, correct?
I think what you're asking is if we, if we permit a project and hold off on when we're going to allow for the affordable, if it's permitted, does it count towards the affordable or that it actually has to be built?
Correct. That's exactly what I'm asking.
So, I'm going to double-check myself and confirm with council. If it's permitted, do they count or do they actually have to be built?
So, it's not as easy as it sounds. So, when a, when a comprehensive permit is approved, when it's filed with the town clerk, those affordable units go on the SHI immediately. They have one year to be, for a building permit to be pulled. If a building permit is not pulled within a year, those units come off the SHI. Once a building permit is pulled, they have a year to request a certificate of occupancy. If the building permit is pulled, they go on the SHI. If the certificate of occupancy is not granted within a year, they come off the SHI. So, they're, they're constantly coming on and off.
Yep, and that's fair, and that's fair enough, and that's what I wanted to know. So, it sounds like if, what you just said, very clear, you know, if they haven't done it, doesn't count. There's parameters. Thank you. And finally, just a statement. So, the high-density housing, not necessarily this development, but the high-density housing is incompatible with the master plan. We've been very clear about the rural character of Lakeville. So, just in closing, this is incompatible, and it's really against the wishes of the people of Lakeville. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Rodney, I'm not sure if they were clapping for you or clapping because you were the last guy up, so. Okay. Do we have any follow-up comments or questions from anyone on the board? I would like to thank everyone. We've lost a lot of the audience, but everyone here for putting, I didn't want to say putting up, but for bearing with us through this process. We knew it was going to be a little long, but as I had assured everyone, I wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to get up, express their concerns, ask their questions. We have compiled a list between all of us on this board and council and our secretary to make sure we follow up on everything. Obviously, I think the three big takeaways tonight are safety, traffic, and water. Our next meeting, you might correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, is June 17th?
20.
20, no. Yes, what?
June 17th.
June 17th. We will be having separate, this is the normal night, the third Thursday of the month that the zoning board normally meets. In order to be respectful of other people who need to come before the zoning board for other issues, we are having our meetings on separate dates. For the most part, they will be on the second Monday of each month going forward for the next few months. There are a couple of times when we need to move them, as an example, in June, because we have town meeting on the second Monday in June, so we can't have both meetings the same night. But we will be posting within, within the next 48 business hours, a list of the dates over the next few months for when the hearings for Rocky Woods will happen, and I know at this point, based on what we, our understanding is as far as the traffic study already starting and having enough time to review it, we will definitely be talking about traffic at the next meeting. That will be our focus. And going forward, we will try to specify what topics and what areas we will be focusing on at each meeting to give everyone a little bit of a better sense as to what we're focusing on. But the next meeting will definitely be primarily focused on, on traffic, so. Do you have anything else to add at this point, council on the petitioner's behalf?
We do not. We agree to the continuance in, on the issue of addressing traffic.
Okay. Any other comments before I ask for a motion to continue to June 20th? That meeting will also be, be back here. Excuse me, June 17th. Too many dates in my head. The location will be here, same place. Okay.
Thank you to the board.
No, we don't, we need a motion to continue first.
I'll take a motion to continue.
We have a motion to continue the hearing to the 17th of June, same site. Do we have a second? We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Oh, is that, that's the-
But we don't have, right? All right. Now, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll entertain that motion.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Meeting is adjourned at 10:27. Thank you.